This conference will now be recorded.
Microphone.
Yes, sir. Mr. Zaleski, just for your information, what happened was is that the meeting was originally scheduled to be live like our last meeting, and then we were instructed that it had to be virtual. So we re-advertised, and obviously, some people didn't look at the second notice.
Are they lined up at City Hall, Roy?
There are several that are, yes, sir.
Oh.
Hi, Aaron.
Welcome all to our Video Conference Planning and zoning Commission of Thursday, April 12, 2021. I apologize if there's been any confusion as to our last meeting was live at City Hall, and it was rescheduled for a video conference.
I had one of these in my neighborhood.
And I'd like to ask any of those that you just try to mute your mic until it becomes your turn to address the commission. First of all, I'd like to welcome and introduce the members of the commission. We have, and I believe we're all in attendance this evening, Julie Davis, Richard Brown, Larry Hagler, Don Jandro, Tom Monahan, our vice chair, and I'm Gary Zaleski, Chairman of the City Housing and Zoning Commission. Once again, one of the things that we will do is that any citizen comments for non-agenda items, we'll go ahead and take those. I'd like to first just make a statement that we will try to keep the three-minute rule in effect. When you have comments, try to make them concise, and try to avoid any kind of redundancy. If someone has already made that point to the commission, try to refrain and use your three minutes to your advantage for the points that you would like to make that haven't already been addressed by other members. I'm going to ask those individuals if there's a way that you could mute your voice. Some are call-ins, and if you can just mute that until it gets to the part of the agenda that you're going to be able to speak or make your comments. So with that said, of course, during the Open Meetings Act, the commission is prohibited from acting or discussing other than factual responses. So are there any citizen comments for any non-agenda items at this time?
I do have. We have some comments here, please. We have some comments about point of order.
If you'd like to make a comment about a non-agenda item.
Well, the issue we have, I don't know how you want to handle this. The issue is we are sitting at City Hall on the front steps of the city. I don't know if you can hear me or not. Can you hear me, please?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. So a few of us are here at the front steps of the City Hall because the letters we received, it never said it's going to be an online meeting. So we have come here, we have our forms in our hands, we don't know how to fill it out until after the meeting, and the City Hall is going to be closed. So we just found out about 10 minutes ago because the documents we received never told us it's an online meeting.
I understand. If you'll just stand by for just a moment.
Thank you.
Aaron, our city attorney, Aaron, can you address that? Wasn't this re-advertised as a video conference?
That's correct, Mr. Chairman. The Yes, sir. The notice for this meeting that was posted shows it as a video conference meeting, and then Roy can chime in and address the notification process.
I am sorry. That is not accurate. We have the letters in our hands that has no indication of an online meeting. There are several of us here.
Whoever is doing the speaking right now, if you could at least identify your name and your address for the
Sure. My name is Faris Badri. I am the president of Arosi Corporation, and I am the owner of 21101 Santa Monica Avenue.
Okay, is this an agenda item?
What is an agenda item?
What you're referring to.
Agenda item two.
Are you referring?
The fact that we did not know it was an online meeting, I don't think it's an agenda meeting, but the issue is an agenda meeting, yes. It's project number 211873REZ.
If you could excuse me, if this is in regards to an agenda item this evening, you'll have to wait until we get to that particular agenda item. It is my understanding that this video conference, when it had to be changed from a live to a video conference, that the notice, the appropriate notices were posted for this video conference. I apologize. I apologize that you did not see that notice.
Yes, sir.
If you Where was it posted? Excuse me, where was it posted?
Roy, would you refer to that, or Aaron?
If I may interrupt, okay. We did re-advertize. Once I understood what case they were looking at, I did look at other cases, the notices. Some of them were correct on some cases. On the one in particular one they're talking about, notice number two, it looks like they must have printed them before we changed it because the people that did respond and the ones that are in your packet do not mention the virtual meeting like the other agenda items do.
But our letter doesn't say that. We never received that notice.
Sir, I'm agreeing. I don't know if you realize it or not.
I'm sorry?
I'm agreeing with you. I'm pointing out that they're in fact
I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Can't get this one. All right. If I could, what I would like to do at this point, I would like to, if it is a non-agenda item, I would like to see if there's anything regarding a non-agenda item, and if there is not, we will move on so that we could address some of these concerns that are being expressed by some of the citizens. Tom, were you trying to signal me?
Yeah, I was just gonna offer a suggestion for those callers who are standing outside City Hall. By the time we get, if they're all there for the agenda item off Santa Monica, they could probably get home and get on their computers before we get to that agenda item. Yeah.
But Our way, you get to the agenda item, and then I can't voice my concern.
Well, I live in Buda, and it's going to take me hour and a half to get back to my house to get it from the computer.
It was just Mr. Chairman.
Hold on, please. I take it there are no citizen comments for non-agenda items. So what I would like to do as we get ready to begin our meeting this evening, since I guess what I would like to know is if this is regarding item number two on the agenda, item number two having to do with the 32.42 acre tract. If that is the case, then I'm going to ask Roy, as well as our city attorney, Aaron Silvera, if it would be appropriate to table this item until the following meeting due to the confusion that
And that's what I was trying to point out. We have to re-notice this.
I'm okay with that. I appreciate that. Yes.
There's no doubt that they were in the middle and didn't notice they printed some of them already, and this agenda item didn't get fixed like the rest of them did.
Thank you.
So procedurally, Aaron, do we just make a motion to table this until the item number two until our next regular meeting?
The one thing I'd want to verify is whether the next meeting would provide him sufficient time to re-notice it. If it would, then that is the proper procedure. Otherwise, tabling it until the notice has been perfected is the appropriate way to go. So it may be
We're good. It's the advertising that takes long. The letters are not that big a deal.
So to the next meeting is the correct way to go, to table it to the next meeting so that we can correct, complete the proper notification process. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Aaron. So for the commission members, item number two, 21-18773REZ, will be tabled until our next regular meeting. Is there a second? It's been seconded by Tom Monahan. All those in favor? I'm going to just go through our list. Ms. Davis? Mr. Brown?
Hi.
Mr. Solomon? Did we lose Charlie? I know he was there.
He's there. He's muted.
Okay. Mr. Hagler?
Hi.
Mr. Jandro?
Hi.
All right. Tom seconded.
There's Mr. Solomon.
Uh, thank you, Charles.
Now, let me give you the irony. When we re-notice, their old letters will be correct except for the date. We're counting on a live meeting next month, so I've been told.
Okay. Please, I'm on the I'm going to get tabled to the next meeting also.
Excuse me?
Hello?
Mr. Jamboor, is this the only item where we have this issue, item number two?
It's the only one I've seen so far.
I've got mine in my hand, so please address my agenda item.
We don't even know who's speaking.
My name is Jenna. I live on Mockingbird Street. This is a reference project 21-1879-FPE. It says nothing on this notice that I received in the mail about a virtual meeting. Please, I would appreciate this being tabled.
I'm looking at that as well. Give me a second. He is correct. That one was not done correctly either.
Okay, Roy, would you reiterate what item this is again? Because I could not make up the caller's description.
I will most definitely, sir.
What item is
We are referring to item number four.
Item number four. All right. Regarding commission members, regarding item number four, 21-18779-SPE. Due to That's incorrect. It's 21-1879-77.
No, sir. We have no such number.
Okay, I'm looking at it right now. 21-1879-SPE-E.
That is correct, the way you read it the second
That's item number four, correct?
Yes, sir.
Regarding item number four, S21-187-1879-SPE, that item will also be tabled. Is there a second to the motion to table this until our next regular meeting? Seconded by Don Jandro?
Can I
Seconded, and Julie? Julie votes yes. Richard Brown?
Hi.
Thank you. Charles Solomon? Having a hard time here in Charles, but I think he voted yes. And Mr. Hagler?
Yes.
Mr. Jandro, seconded.
Hi.
Mr. Monahan? And chair votes. So item number four will also be tabled until our next regular meeting.
Well, did I say something?
I'm sorry. Is it in regards to item number four?
Yes, I was the presenter for item number four, so.
Well, it'll have to be presented at our next regular meeting. I apologize to any of you for this inconvenience, but so much for our virtual meetings versus our live meetings, and we'll just have to bear with it. I sincerely apologize to all of those that have been inconvenienced because of this problem.
When will the new meeting be scheduled?
Second
Let me get my 30th of the month, next month. I believe that's September 9.
That is correct, September 9. Thursday, September 9 at 7 o'clock, and hopefully, it's going to be live at City Hall.
That's what they told me to advertise, but they told me two different things for this one.
I understand, Roy. And I know that puts you in a bad spot as well.
Well, obviously, our staff did not realize. They made the change on some and didn't on others.
Is it possible that we could put a notice on the notifications that would indicate that people should check that out, check the city website to find out what it's going to be? It's hard to predict what we'll be doing a month from now.
I understand. That is a conversation we need to have with Aaron because, quite frankly, it's still volatile.
Sure.
Mr. Chairman, I'll coordinate with Mr. Jamboor on the appropriate notice language to provide us and the public with the most notice and flexibility possible, given that, you know, we just got notification today that there may be mask mandates in Travis County, and we may be limited to how many people we can gather in public. So we'll work on that here and get that notice out to all of those folks who would normally be impacted and make sure they have the correct information.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Silvera.
We had too long a meeting anyway. We took care of that.
All right. I want to make sure that I have four, two and four. So just to be clear, I don't have my secretary. I just have my trusty dog at my side here. So we now have officially tabled until our next regular meeting in September, items number two and number four. I guess before we, because of this ongoing confusion, I would ask if there is any similar issues with the remaining items that are on our agenda.
No, sir. I checked the only other ones. We only have one other public hearing that was noticed brand-new, and I checked.
All right. Thank you, Roy.
Yeah, I'm not sure exactly why some got correct and some didn't, but we'll try and find out.
Thank goodness we don't have any public lashing since Lago Vista.
Didn't we request that the callers that are on the phone mute their microphones when they are not being called on?
Caller number three, can you mute your mic, please? I'm gonna mute them for them. Thank you.
Yeah. Would you please, Roy?
Yeah. I don't even know if they realize what's going on.
I don't either. It's unfortunate. We're going to move along to our regular agenda now, starting with item number one.
Mr. Chairman, hi. This is Paul Roberts. I have a non-agenda item I wanted to address real quick.
Well, why didn't you address that, Paul, when we had non-agenda items open?
I was enjoying how gracious you were to the company this evening, and I didn't want to interject or interrupt you. Kind, sir.
What a gentleman. Thank you, Paul.
Thank you, sir.
Go right ahead with your comment, Paul.
Thank you. It's just a kind of a procedural question. The last minutes for this committee were from May of last year, and it seems to be a bit anomalous amongst the committees and commissions, and I was just wondering why that is. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Moving down to item number one.
May I have an answer to my question, Mr. Chairman?
He didn't actually request an answer. He just said he was wondering.
Oh, well, I felt like that was amongst the common folk implied, an implied question, Mr. Brown. So the committee doesn't have, does the committee, if the committee has a secretary, I just don't understand why there's no minutes for this. That's all. I think there's something in the Texas Open Meetings Act that negates the need for minutes if it's video recorded, and I'm just wondering if that's the reason why there's no minutes.
Mr. Jandro?
Paul, the minutes that were attached to this packet are from May 13, 2021.
I don't see them. I don't see any minutes posted to the city website. That is the basis of the question.
I'm just talking about this packet. I'm sorry.
Right. Now, there are some that need to be posted, but we have some that are signed that are not yet posted. We have some that have been approved that are not yet signed. You know, when we meet regularly in person, that was not a problem. We, you know, it's been a little erratic since.
Okay, cool. So there are minutes. They just haven't been uploaded yet.
Correct. And some of them have been signed, some of them haven't. That's part of the problem.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
You bet.
All righty then. Item number one. Are there any more citizen comments for non-related items? Then we'll move along to our regular meeting. Item number one, 21-1858-SPE, consolidation of a special exception allocation pursuant to section 11.60 of chapter 14 to allow an increase in the maximum height allowed by Table A of chapter 14 from 15 feet to 21 feet for a single-family residence at 21203 Warbonnet Cove, Barquet Ranches, Platte 11, Lot 11229. And Roy, if you want to say anything more regarding the staff presentation, and just, I don't know, maybe summarize from where we left off and
Just very quickly.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, this was on the agenda a couple of months ago. The issue was that even though that we didn't see a problem, we didn't have the drawings that were necessary to, you know, validate what we all assumed was that this would be fine from a contextual standpoint. We received those drawings. We received way more than we needed, and the staff has no problem with you going ahead and making a decision.
I'm having some technical issues here. Is everybody able to hear me?
Yes, I can.
Yes, sir.
Okay. I think I've got a spectrum issue going on. Yes, Roy, as I recall, when we moved this to a future meeting, I think the applicant was not available at the time, and we did not have the documents that we needed.
We did not have the building elevations. Yes, sir. That was the issue.
So as I understand it, we have received maybe even more than we needed at this point.
That is absolutely true.
I guess what I'll ask, is there any of the commission members that have questions for the staff before we move on to the applicant presentation? I guess not. So if we could, I see, I'm pretty sure I see the applicants are here if they would like to go ahead and comment at this time.
Yes, hi. Hello, everyone. I'm Colin Thomas.
I'm Caitlin. Good to meet y'all.
And I appreciate the introduction on our project. We're working with K RDB Architects out of Austin, and You Build It is our general contractor. They have a project nearby in Lago Vista right now. Want to share a little bit more, huh?
Yeah, so we are first-time builders, so I thank y'all for your generosity and grace as we've been learning this process. It's been a joy to work with Lago Vista, and we're really excited to build in a small community, smaller community. I wouldn't say Lago Vista's small by any means, especially it's growing, with how it just is. It's a wonderful place, and we're excited to start our family there. We're actually going to welcome the first new addition to our family in January. And with the home, we are hoping to make it a two-story just so we can capture these beautiful views. And as we're looking at our lot and the lot placements of those around us, us building up that extra six feet still keeps us within the height of our tree line. And then with how that slopes up a little bit further behind us, it should not have any impact on future home builds. So we'll give the respect to our future neighbors of also getting to enjoy that beautiful view.
And we do have some drawings we could share via sharing our screen if that's necessary. But yeah, we're looking forward to being a part of Lago Vista. We're both from smaller communities in Kansas and moved to the Austin area for work and have loved everything about the area so far.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Tom, I see that you might have a question for the applicant.
I guess I was just curious if y'all are pilots by any chance, or you realize buying an airport is going to be noise associated with your new home?
Yeah, I think you asked, and I actually work for Cessna and Beechcraft, and I'm remote down here in Texas, and it's been fun. We've actually had the chance to get to know Jim and Becky Smith already, and we love that aviation community up there. So we're really excited about it and excited to be able to fly so close.
Colin's a pilot. I'm learning that the one hit up in the air before I go up in the air, so we don't, we don't mind the airport. It's a huge plus, huge plus for us.
Anyone else have a question or a comment for the applicant? See, you're unmuted there, Richard. Did you have something?
No, I do not. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, anyone else? If that is the case, then we will continue the public hearing at 7:29. And if there are any one that would like to make a comment during the public hearing, if you just identify yourself or speak up if you're calling in. All right, I don't see anybody from the public wanting to chime in, so we're gonna close the public hearing at 7:30. I guess open it up for any discussion amongst the Planning and Zoning Commission members. Tom?
Yeah, I think it's a modest, high request and for everything I can tell, I don't think it's going to impede on anybody's view, Elsa's view. And so I guess I'm in favor of approving this one.
All right. Any other comments? Don, I see you were.
Yeah, I agree with Tom. I've been up there and looked at it, and I I think the applicants are correct. They won't block anybody's view, and as long as they're happy with the sights and sounds around them, I would, I would think it's okay.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. Well, then regarding item number two, I'm sorry, item number one, a special exception for the residents at 21203 Warbonnet Cove from 15 feet to 21 feet be approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission. Do I have a second? Seconded by Tom Monahan. Any further discussion? All right. And all in, let me just, I'm gonna go through the list. Kind of got a little off task as during some of the confusion. All right, if you'll just, I think I can see most everybody. Richard?
Aye.
And Don?
Aye.
Larry?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Is Charles with us? Well, maybe we lost him. Tom?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye. Passes. Can't really say unanimous because of can't seem to find Charles. So thank you very much. Good luck with your home up there. And the music of 210 horsepower Continental.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all very much.
We can't wait.
Congratulations on your first baby.
Thank you.
I'll tell you one thing. It's a whole bunch different than getting a puppy.
We're logging as much sleep right now as we can.
It won't help. All right, thank you very, thank you very much. Okay, well, with that, we will move on to item number three, which is 21-1878 PDD-MOD, consideration of a recommendation regarding a request to amend the balance of an approximate 282-acre portion of the Firefly Cove Plan Development District to approve a new concept and detail plan modifying the uses and development standards applicable to the remaining phases. The property is commonly referred to as 19517 Boggy Ford Road, and a legal description of the entire tract is available upon request from the City of Lago Vista. And Roy, if you would give us our staff presentation.
Yes, sir. And I guess I need to apologize. There's a a lot of discourse in the staff report about something that I didn't appreciate. It was never the applicant's intent to seek detailed approval for the estate lots, and somehow or another that escaped me. You know, based on the documents, I just assumed that something was missing or or so on, but they clarified later that it was never their intent and that one of the alternates that I mentioned is being, you know, rational was to approve the concept plan for everything and the detail plan only for the SFA lots. Well, that happens to be what they intended all along. It just, I didn't get that from, from the documents that I was looking at. There was also a reference to something that confused me, you know, in the staff report about, you know, the design of the local streets. Turns out that was a typo in being the world's worst typist. I'm certainly not going to criticize anybody else for committing one mistake when I make about 20 a day of that nature. So, yeah, I was, I was thinking it was, you know, maybe a reference to an external manual. It's not. It's just a different, it's a different paragraph in the narrative. You know, everything else was, you know, in line of what we expected, quite frankly. There was some mention about, you know, the items still needing to be resolved between the city engineer and the TIA. You know, we're not trying to overlook those. It's just that we think those are of the nature that it's possible for you to forward your recommendation you know, based on getting those resolved before they get, you know, encoded in an ordinance or with all those explained about, you know, what's left to be, you know, fixed or resolved, if you will. We don't think it's the sort of thing that would necessarily, you know, require you to defer that your decision or whatever. But, but it is something you should perhaps, you know, mention in your recommendation.
And I guess, Roy, this one possible recommendation, C, that is, you approved the application as meeting the requirements of both concept plan and details for the phases. There's much more detail in the item, in item B, but you were mentioning those estate lots. The estate lots are mentioned in both a possible recommendation in A as well as B.
Right.
So could you just reclarify that thing about the estate lots?
And just so, just as a reminder, the way I phrase those, you know, I basically list everything conceivable as an alternate recommendation. The further down the list it is, the less I think it's legally justifiable. In this case, it was like, if you guys think this is enough detail on the estate lots also, you know, it's theoretically possible for you to make that recommendation. But because it was third on the list below the other two, I thought it was more likely that you should, you know, withhold detailed plan approval for the estate lots. And it turns out that was the intent of the applicant all along anyway.
Okay.
Does that help?
I think so.
Okay.
Questions that the commission members might have with the staff? Tom?
Yes.
Roy, one of those late comments that we received just before the meeting hour or two ago. One guy for the, I guess, the local POA in the area. He brought up basically some environmental concerns about blue herons, noise, et cetera. That's all taken care of elsewhere, right? That's, I mean, we got an ordinance on noise and and any wildlife review that's taken care of outside of any upper view, right?
Yes, sir. Federal Wildlife basically is in charge of establishing, you know, the endangered species and those sort of things, and, and they actually enforce them now. If we're aware of them, like in the case of the golden chick warbler, where it's so common, you know, we do try and assist developers in, you know, making their correct determinations in those sort of things, but yeah, that's not something that's part of the city ordinances.
But our, our city noise ordinances should alleviate any issues they may have with that as well, right?
Presumably, yes, sir. It's, it's not actually something our department enforces, so, you know, I will certainly look, you know, but that is my presumption. That is something that handled primarily by PD.
Richard, I saw you're muted. Did you have something for Roy, or am I being?
Well, I'd like to, I'd like to chime in on Tom's comment that noise emanating from that public area across the water is something that just happens. People who live on the North Shore can hear party noise from the South Shore, and it's, I know that the people who have lived at the south end of Draper Cove for a long time have enjoyed peace and quiet, but that, that will just be an issue that will have to be resolved by give and take with the users, not by, not by city ordinance.
Any other commission members have any questions or comments for the staff? If not, then we will move along to the applicant presentation.
Gary?
Oh, I'm sorry, Julie.
That's okay. I just wanted to let the other members know that I had to recuse myself from this, as I live in the notification area. So just wanted to let you others know.
Thank you, Julie. Time for me? If we could, then we'll move along to the applicant presentation.
Thank you. Could I ask first that you turn the screen over to Luke Gasta? And are, we have a PowerPoint presentation to show you.
Whoa.
And while you're doing it, I might say to Commissioner Monahan that there are golden cheek warblers in the area. We pay every year to, I think it's plateau. Luke's much more eloquent about this than I am, but we're aware of those. We pay into people to, to pay this group to go in, and they check on the nests and how many are there and everything's okay. And at the end of the day, any of that space that we happen to take up, we contribute to the Balconies Wildlands. Wildlands, Luke, is that the agency that handles golden cheek warblers?
Yeah, the BCCP program, the Balconies Canyonlands. I believe that's what it's called.
So anyway, I just thought I'd, since you'd asked the question before I started, I thought I'd at least get that off the table. So you're all set up. You can see on my screen. Great. Planning Commissioners, first of all, thank you. In my lifetime, I've served on a commissioner or two, and a school board, and several other things, and it's a thankless job by and large. You only get to hear what people ask for things and complain, so I really appreciate your time tonight, and thank you for Erin, Eric, other members of the Development Services Team. I appreciate, we appreciate your help also. Roy, you're much too kind tonight. All I know about Roy is that there are times we've talked at 7:30 at night, and I thank you very much for guiding us through this and being of assistance to us. And on with the presentation. Next slide, Luke.
Give me a second. I'm trying to figure out how it works with go-to meeting.
There you go.
There you go. Go ahead.
Great. I wanted to, mine's moving a little slow on this end also. My name is Dirk Gasta. I wanted to clear up a little bit. There's, over time, this has been a couple of projects and different owners, and so just to be clear, the PDD name was originally, when it was approved, was Tessa Conico. And we are changing the name with this amendment to Firefly Cove. The property owner for a long time was Travis Meadows LLP, and the project was often referred to as Travis Meadows. But in December of 2020, the property was acquired by Firefly Cove LLC. The manager, you will see Sunrise, the Sunrise Company logo in the bottom corner. The manager of the product, project is Sunrise Company, and I'll explain a little bit about them later. Long story short, I'm a member, a manager, and an owner of Firefly Cove, and I'm the president of the Southwest and Mountain Region of Sunrise Company. And so have full authority or responsibility for whatever happens tonight, and I thank you, but I just wanted to make that clear. And we'll go from there. Sunrise Company, for 45 years, they've been around all across the Southwest. We've built more than 16,000 homes in that time period. We built 30 golf courses in that time period. Houston, Colorado Springs, Aspen, Las Vegas, Palm Springs. Our main business is counter clubs in retirement communities, 55-plus. We also, in kind of the downturn, had a fractional ownership condominium in Aspen called Dancing Bear that is now done and completed, and we're very happy about that. Team introductions. There are a lot of people in the audience, though it'll shrink down when we get done. With Sunrise Company is Luke Gasta. He's also an owner and he's project manager of Firefly Cove. Meg Morehead is our salesperson, and we have Meg as a salesperson. She just lit up her screen there. She's worked in selling real estate in lake communities for a long time. Not that long, I guess. I'm a long time. She's not. Michelle Connor, are you on tonight? I think she is. She's also a salesperson for us, and she's also our I think she is. She's also a salesperson for us, and she's also a resident in this area for twenty-seven years. Uh, lives in Jonestown now, I believe, in remodeling their house. So some of you may know her. She's been around a long time and in the community. Uh, in addition, Michael Price is on. He's in charge of all our construction operations. Twenty-nine years of experience in the Austin area in residential and commercial projects. Uh, in addition, because most of us aren't smart enough to do what the rest of these folks do, we have several consultants, many I'm sure that you're uh, familiar with. Lacey Ellers uh, of Howard, of McLean and Howard uh, is our land use attorney. Uh, not that there's anything wrong. We just have lots of questions with a project this size. Uh, also joining the, joining us tonight is Trey Gamble, and I don't think Julie was going to be able to make it. With Alliance Transportation Group, they've done work in the Lago Vista um, over the years, and I'm sure you're familiar with them. They are the, the group that did the, the updated T I A. And then also Nick Sandlin. Sandlin Services is responsible for all civil engineering on the project. And that is our key. To start off just a little bit, Royal Oaks is a, is a, is Texas experience for Sunrise. We did Royal Oaks Counter Club in Houston. Um, Royal Oaks was nine hundred homes. Prices ranged from three hundred thousand dollars to a million five. Um, we also sold some custom lots. Most expensive one went to a guy named Nick Ben Exel. He used to play basketball in the N B A, but he pays a million bucks for his lot. Uh, it's a nice community off of Westheimer. Uh, it is fully complete and has been for years. Uh, all this will kind of come to play in the end when I sum it up. Uh, the clubhouse you see is forty-four thousand square feet. There's another fifteen thousand square foot fitness center, tennis courts, pickleball courts, uh, you name it. It's the hub of our lifestyle. People that live in this community, everyone's a member in one way, shape or form. And it's just a great place to play. Here's one of, we, we build, in most of our communities, we build almost all the houses. Uh, this is what I would call a production house, if you will, uh, where we have a model park and we have numerous models, and they can pick from that, and we build their house, uh, similar to most homes in all of Austin. But this is one of the larger homes that we offered in Royal Oaks. Um, I will mention that we're fully aware of dark skies, and in Houston, obviously, there are not. Um, you, I've lived in Houston a long time, and you, it's hard to ever see a star of it out there. Um, here's another house that, oh. Another house in Royal Oaks. It's a little smaller. These are both pictures of model homes. Um, we go down, down the chain, but just a representation of Royal Oaks. Talk a little bit about our Austin experience. Uh, Michael, who I mentioned earlier, Luke and I worked for Brookfield, one of the largest land developers and home builders in Austin. I was with Brookfield from two thousand fourteen to two thousand nineteen and served as president of Brookfield, Texas. Uh, during that time, we launched two large communities. One was called Kissing Tree, which is a retirement community in San Marcos. It's thirteen hundred acres, thirty-two hundred homes, uh, full golf course and an amenity campus with more things to do if you're over fifty-five than you'd ever seen. Um, just something locally. It was on the edge of hill country. Uh, this is a road that goes through the property. Um, but as you can see, we, we vertical cut limestone just to let people know that they were in the hill country. Um, it's become a pretty special place for me because I put so many hours in it. One thing I will note that kissing tree is very similar in topo and soils or limestone, if you want to call it that. Um, so we're used to working in that and um, come on slow us down here in Lago Vista. This, believe it or not, is the model park before we had closed any of the owners. We had about, we had over two hundred contracts from people to buy houses before we ever closed the first one. So we like to, to any reason to have a good time and give something, give people something to do. We set this up in the model park and put tables all the way down the street, and I think there were three hundred people that ate there that night. Uh, all, all that were under contract. Eastern Park was also a Brookfield project. It is twenty-two hundred acres, sixteen thousand homes. It's in southeast Austin. Here is a site plan. Um, the road to the right, the black road, is Highway one eighty-three. And that is William Cannon on the top, the slaughterhouse on the bottom. So it is located only thirteen minutes from downtown. Uh, right near the, the southwest corner of the airport. It was a property that had all kinds of product from A to Z. Um, this is the rec center that actually Luke was responsible for constructing. Uh, it is the, the hub of working out in Eastern Park. That's been very well received. This is what we call Bryant Park. Uh, it was named Bryant Park. It is surrounded by houses. It is kind of a neighborhood park that's got everything to do with kids and dogs and swings and barbecues. And we'll end it, end up building about a dozen of those, or Brookfield will, because I'm no longer with them. Um, throughout Eastern Park, and thus our motto was your parks, your home. Um, it's a great place to live. It is also just, there's a little bit of product that is similar to our first spaces. Um, and I can talk about that later, but I noticed the differences in colors and styles and architectural features in that, in, in this model park here. So why Sunrise Company for Firefly Cove? We are, we are a lifestyle focused community, if you will, or developer. Um, we're more concerned about creating communities people love to live in. We focus on how our customers live inside the house and outside the house. Um, our goal is that people, people buy a house from us, not because of the house. They buy a house from us because they want to live in our neighborhood. Um, so we've done every, every project I listed uh, earlier and everything that we've done at Sunrise has always been the same way. Uh, we sell totally different, we build totally different than most builders, simply because we're trying to create community and lifestyle, and we work hard to do that. Um, residents in this community, I assure you, will ride their bikes, their scooters, their skateboards, push their strollers, um, through the neighborhood and along the trails that we create. Um, they'll do it however you want to do it because they get to know each other. They come to the events. Um, we are a little different. We develop the community. Uh, we manage and operate all of the amenities, and we manage the H O A. As I mentioned a little earlier, we're also the home builder in our community and typically build and sell every home. We've done everything from apartments, which we do not have planned here, but we, from apartments to first time buyer homes to houses that are over four million dollars on a production basis. We build to meet the market. We will do the same thing here. Why we're here tonight. Uh, P D D Amendment Two. Uh, we're asking for uh, this amendment to the previous plan. So I put this in, and I think Roy's already explained this. Um, but we're in total agreement with Roy. Uh, a little bit about, you know, so it's concept approval for the whole thing, but detailed plan approval for what Roy mentioned, including the amenity area. Um, we will return later for detail, detailed approval on single family estates, lot, land uses. Um, the forty-five lots will be some of the best views that come out of this community. Um, I'll be quiet now, and then I apologize for the typo that he mentioned in paragraph three D of the applicant letter. Instead of two C, it should say three C, and it'll make more sense. Um, this is the concept plan of the current P D D. This is Tessa County Cove. Uh, I put this up just so you can understand. We're not seeking new P D D. This is not more units to go into your planning. Um, we're simply asking to change it. This slide is our current concept plan for, or it's not, it's current, I guess it's hopefully the final concept plan for Firefly Cove. Um, two things of note, Firefly Cove has three hundred and twenty-five units at a max compared to three sixty-nine for the old plan. In addition, we have fifteen percent more open space than the previously approved Tessa County Cove. Um, I think if you kind of glance at these, you'll see that, you know, the topo drives where the housing goes, and by and large, it's, it's kind of the same on both of these. Talk a little bit about our vision, and it hopefully will explain everything we are trying to do. Um, our vision is to create a holistic community that encompasses what it means to live in Lago Vista. We envision a place that our residents probably call home, a neighborhood where families choose to walk the streets, to socialize from porch to porch, to safely walk or bike from each home to the amenities in lieu of getting in a vehicle. Firefly Cove will be a haven for children to ride their bikes and congregate outdoors amongst each other and the natural environment. Firefly Cove will seamlessly integrate the residences into the topography of the hill country, providing walking, hiking and biking trails between our neighborhoods and our amenities. So any place in our community, you could jump on your bike and ride from your house down to the amenities and ride back up.
Here's what this place is going to look like. They're, they're doing their sales pitch, but basically they're going to surround our ten acres with houses.
This is our property right here. They changed, the original man was this.
Sir. Yeah, I'm, I'm not.
I'm sorry, is, who, who's speaking right now?
Caller number six, and I think.
Caller number six. Uh, you may have to uh, wait until uh, we're at the uh, public hearing. If we'll allow uh, them to make, the applicant to make their presentation, please.
Okay, I'll continue. Um, residents who live and guests who choose to visit Firefly will immediately recognize the energy of the community, and through smart planning and design will be encouraged to drive calmly in respect for its stakeholders. In simpler terms, we envision Firefly to be much like most of Lago Vista. Some pretty photos, again, Lago Vista. Um, residents riding their bikes, residents walking on the streets. You know, this is what we see in our communities. Uh, nothing new to Lago Vista. And on the time of day, you can find lots of people riding their bike. Um, I would notice this is another photo that, this is actually in Cherry Town. Uh, I think Cherry Town, you all are probably familiar with that, and it's much like Lago Vista, narrow streets, no sidewalks, and people walk all the time. I chose this photo simply because my favorite sport was basketball, and I used to play it in the street as a kid, and apparently with the net up there, so does the, so does the boy that lives in the house next door. Um, also, trying to have a home, a, a community where kind of the houses integrate with the trees in the topo more than mass grade forty acres and clear out every tree and build houses all on road next to each other. Uh, we like to work with the topo more than most builders do. How do we turn our vision into a community? We create covenants that instill and protect the vision. As I mentioned before, we will have an H O A. We have consolidated most of the residential uses to the flatter areas in the community near Boggy Ford Road. Um, and we use the land efficiency efficiently and preserve the natural character and assets of the land, which increase the open space by fifteen percent. One of the things we do, we do several things in, in our design and our layout that are different than most. We like varied setbacks, which you see here. So the houses aren't lined up all on the building envelope line at the front of the street. We offset those. Gives, gives the neighborhood a much better feeling than what I call barracks going down the street. We also control the repeat of similar plans. We have in our guidelines that are in place. Uh, you have to be three or four houses away to build something that's, you know, the same house of the same elevation style and the same architectural style. So we don't, you don't get a situation where you're going, well, this whole street all looks the same. Uh, we work hard, try to make it look different. Uh, one other important thing is that we, we have consistent landscaping for each house, whether it's a nine hundred thousand dollar house here or a three hundred or a two hundred thousand dollar house here. We have consistent landscaping standards. And through the H O A, we have consistent landscape maintenance. Um, one of the big deterrents to home values is when you live in your house and your neighbor doesn't mow his grass anymore and doesn't water any parks, two cars in the front yard. Um, not saying they do that, but we've all seen a few of those. Uh, that will not be prohibited, that will not be allowed in Firefly Cove. Just a little, a few pictures of our houses. This is uh, one of our uh, kind of middle of the road. It's about twenty-six hundred square feet. And this is, this is our hill country elevation. So this floor plan has three different types of elevations, and every floor plan we do does. And we have multiple colors for every elevation. Um, for example, that last house I showed you, this is the same floor plan with two different architectural elevations, two different styles and two different color palettes. This is actually the same house with the same elevation that we call our, our farmhouse. Um, but totally different color palettes on most of them. The two on the right are a little close, but I think you can see what I'm trying to allude to. Just one more. This is all the same plan, different colors, but all in the hill country realm. So while this is only one elevation style or one architectural style, between changing up the stone and the colors, uh, we make it look different. Uh, one thing you noticed in your pack was, or in your packet was, this is our marketing brochure, and I think, and I threw it in here um, because it, it's really meant for the buyer. And what you can see at the top of this is Boggy Ford in phase one and phase two of the residential. You can see where all the open space is, and then the future amenity down on the water. All those squiggly orange lines that run through the property. Um, those are actually, have been mapped by Nick, who's on this phone, and Luke on their mountain bikes. Uh, they all exist. Uh, some of those are roads you can drive a car down. Um, some of those are single track for mountain bikes, but it's not like it's going to come someday. Uh, you can already ride these. And this is, this is, came off of their computer thing. I don't know how to do it. But to get to these amenities, for the amenities, while this is um, I noticed one letter that was in the uh, from the resident across the way, uh, Mr. Cherry, I believe it was, was concerned about his boathouse. Um, anyway, we have twelve acres here and another four here uh, that have furniture on the lake. Um, there we plan an amenity pavilion, a pool, a community beach, and someplace in here, a private boat ramp that's for our residents only. Last item, traffic calming methods. Um, these things are inherent in what we'd like to do, and so we're asking your permission to build things just a little bit different, not so much from Lago Vista, but more from, you know, what's kind of in the standard of, of traffic. We, you know, we want narrower streets so people go slower. And, you know, most traffic guys want wider streets so they could go faster. And so we choose narrower streets. I think you're, you're consulting with HGR, City Council, I listened to that a couple of weeks ago on the adoption of your thoroughfare plan. And he said that a couple of times and noted that narrower is safer. And we found that to be the whole truth. We'd like twenty mile an hour speed limits and a twenty mi- twenty mile an hour road design. Technical stuff about site distance and road classifications, but basically it's, we're using accepted criteria for site distance and we are working with that, with what Lago Vista has adopted. We limit parking on one side, to one side of the street. The main deterrent for people driving fast through the community will not be any of this, it will be the residents. We don't have to do any of these, but I'm sure you've already seen, and as you know, we'll then be back sometime a year or so from now. Going, we want to put in speed bumps. You'll drive through there and like many places in Lago Vista, you'll see those little signs that say, drive like the kids live here. I think there was a picture of the one in the pictures I showed earlier. So we're asking for that as part of our approval. And with that, I appreciate your patience. I'd open it up to comment, I'll push it back to you, I'm, I'm available for comments and questions. And, you know, thank you very much for your time and your patience.
Thank you very much. I guess first thing we'll do is, any of the commission members that may have questions. Is there any way we can open it up, a very tiny screen and I can't see if I'm getting.
Yeah, Luke, Luke, can you sign off and that'll clear?
Trying to figure that out. Does that work?
There you go, thank you. Any one of the commission members at this point have questions of the of the applicant? Yes, Larry?
Yes, I know he didn't cover it in his presentation, but it was in the package. And a couple of things was the entrances off of Boggy Ford. I know he's talking about putting a left-hand turn lane on one of the main entrances. And then he's got two emergency exits. Is he gonna do anything to ensure that the emergency exits are only used for emergencies is one item. The one main entrance, when I drove down there and looked at it, where I think it would be, puts it awful close to Lowman for the traffic that's already backing up there, particularly in the mornings and sometimes in the afternoon when people coming back and, and seeing a congestion. And I noticed in, in the traffic deal, it looks like they don't plan on doing anything to Lowman Ford until after they get occupancy for about two hundred and eighty homes. So that looks like, that could be a couple of years of maybe a hundred to a hundred and fifty homes of people driving in and out either, either one of those two entrance and exits before anything's done to help the people coming down either direction on Boggy Ford. So maybe if he can answer some questions about that.
I will take the easy one. For the emergency exits, we will lock those with knock boxes so the fire department can get in. And if it came down to it, you know, you had a fire or something, somebody could crash through it with a car, but they won't be used every day. They'll be locked up and, and our, our, our residents will want it that way. They don't want people driving through the community. For the balance of that, I would like to turn it over to Trey Gamble. Just because he's much more qualified than I am to answer those questions about Lowman and our driveway one. Trey, you're muted if you're talking.
No, I was not, sorry, I was not talking. I was pulling up the, pulling up the, the TIA to take a look at the recommendations. I am, I'm here on behalf of, of Julia Coleman, she's the engineer of record on this. And at the, at Boggy Ford and Lowman, one of the things, we, we are proposing some, some improvements there. Like one of the, one of the issues currently is related to the signal timing. There are improvements in the TIA to, to retime the signal as well as we're showing the addition of a eastbound left turn bay with an acceleration lane. Let's see, yes. And that, those two items will, are intended to address some of the, are the concerns that you've, that you've expressed. I did also note that in the, the report for the thoroughfare plan was also looking at the, the volumes that we had counted at that location and that we had included in our analysis. And they, they're, the results that they were giving in terms of the volumes on Boggy Ford related to the thoroughfare plan are consistent with what we were seeing and analyzing in the TIA as well. I don't know if that's, if that, if that answers your question, if you, if you have, would like additional, you need me to dig a little bit deeper?
I hear what you're saying and, and I understand, I believe. And I think probably one of the things that has really happened since maybe the traffic study started was the amount of traffic turning into the service station or marketplace there on the corner. Because that's becoming a backup in itself. But also the fact that you, according to your paperwork here, you're not gonna start construction on Boggy until after about two hundred and eighty homes have been, received their permit for occupancy. And I don't see that, I see a lot of construction and I see potentially a hundred and fifty to maybe a hundred and seventy houses with vehicles adding traffic. And now you're gonna do construction on Boggy, which is gonna create a traffic problem while the construction's being done.
The, 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 the improvements are recommended to be in place to satisfy phases one and two from the recommended improvements. So that doesn't mean that necessarily that that doesn't happen until all of that is in place. The, the improvements are required to satisfy the demands of phases one and two. So that, that may be a, a, a point of clarification perhaps, that it's, that those improvements don't take place after phases one and two are fully built out. Those improvements are recommended to accommodate the additional traffic from phases one and two.
Okay. Thank you, Gary.
Thank you, Larry. Tom, do you have questions for the applicant?
Yeah. Between the presentation, the slides I saw and some of Roy's earlier comments, I guess I'm, I'm a little confused how assuming we're going to approve, we're asking just for a concept plan. So I got a feeling that recommendations in the staff summary kind of missed the mark a little bit. And then I'm hearing in the presentation about approving the, two key things I picked up is approve the concept plan, which is show, is, which is shown by the changes to some of the wording of the PDD, and then you want to change the name. Is that pretty much what's being asked for tonight? Because I don't think the recommendations in the staff summary hit the mark, you know, they kind of missed the mark in all accounts, I guess.
I appreciate it. You know, what they're asking for is concept approval for everything in detail plan, approval for everything except the estate lots.
Okay, okay.
And, and I think I have an alternate that covers that. Let me go back and make sure.
Those, the four points that you have in item B, are you saying, Roy?
Yes, sir, and that, and those were just the little detailed conditions that you might want to consider. You know, once again, you can modify those on the fly.
So, so Roy, if the concept plan and then the more detail on the estate lots, what, what follows after that?
Well, the idea is they would come back to you for the detailed plan approval of the estate lots. They could neither plat them nor construct them. They, they would simply come back with one more application that covered that. But they could proceed with subdivision plats, which would also come in front of you. And, and they, they would have approval to, to proceed on the SFA lots as well as any plating involved with the, you know, the amenity area.
So do we have to approve the name change too? Or is that just something?
Yeah, I mean, I, it, it, that's just part of what we put in the ordinance. I mean, I don't know that it requires approval. That's just something that, you know, they, they, they use as a branding mechanism to often to separate themselves from prior approvals.
Yeah, okay.
I don't know that it has any substantive, you know, distinctions.
Okay.
A lot, a lot, a lot of people don't brand these things at all. It, it's common here.
All right, so B would probably fit things best based on what they're asking and. Okay.
Yes, sir. And like I said, you, you, the, the, the conditions, you know, once again, those are, those are there for your consideration. I, I put everyone I can think of on that list.
Okay.
Oh, thank you, Tom. Any other members of, Richard?
Thank you. I have a question about the, the phasing of the construction. And that is, I, I wonder to what extent the construction will be dependent upon the use of Draper Road or what is, and I'm not sure if it's Draper Road or Draper's Cove or what. But anyway, the road with the, with the cattle guard up there just off of Lowman Ford Ro- Boggy Ford Road, which currently has a sign that says it's a private road for the use of residents. I, I wonder to, because the, some of the streets in Firefly Cove are planned to be accessed from Draper. How, how the, how Draper would hold up under the strain of that construction phasing and even the eventual use by residents. I can't quite tell from what's before us what the construction sequencing plan is and, and what your planned use of Draper is.
I can, this is Dirk, I was digging. That intersection of Draper's Cove and, and Boggy Ford has been a much discussion as is, you know, what happens ultimately. Draper's Cove largely serves phase three and a small portion of phase one. I think from a youth standpoint, I'd like to turn that back to, to to Trey again, simply because I believe there are forty-one houses that currently use Draper's Cove. And they've used those projections plus what we're going to build. And then he can tell you about, you know, what we have planned, and I think Roy can also. We've worked a situation on that intersection or redesign. But Trey, can you put some numbers to the answer outside of, well, I think it's gonna work?
I think so. The, the counts that we collected for those houses, there was a question about that in, in one of the staff comments about the homes on Draper. And the, there was a question that came up about why we didn't, why those seem to be lower than what we use for analysis. And the, the numbers that, the projections and the trip rates that we use for analysis represent a typical single family home. And we're looking specifically at the peak period of the roadway network around, around the development. The characteristics for those homes on Draper, for the volumes that we used as background traffic, those were, those were actually volumes and counts that were collected from the field. The, the fact that those are, that the numbers we use there are a little bit different from what we would see in our projected numbers is that, that the use of those homes, even though they're sam- single-family residential, the trips are going in and out at a different time than what we're actually analyzing. So the, 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 the analysis that we're doing for Draper and for the, the the traffic that's accessing on to Draper's is based on the projections and based on the, the, the trip rates that we use that are projected during what we would consider to be the peak hour. And those, the, the homes on Draper's, those forty, forty-one homes on Draper's, don't have that same peak period that we are considering to be a typical single family that we're, that we're actually analyzing in the study. It's not that there's not trips going in and out, but they're not happening during that timeframe that we're, that we're analyzing as the critical peak. Does that, not sure if that, if that exactly answers your question, but.
It only partly answers my question. I'm, I'm interested in how you plan to utilize it during the construction, phase one and phase three that seem to be tied very much to Draper's Cove. Will all construction access and any eventual residential access for those two phases be done through the use of Draper's Cove?
In, in short, yes, they will. Just as you noted, part of phase one and all of phase three will access via Draper's Cove. Draper, Draper's Cove is a private road. It's a private road that we own. So there won't be modifications to Draper's Cove. You know, bring it up to current city standards as far as paving and width and right of way. It's not going to, we had no intention of leaving it the way it is and working off of that. But I think it's, you know, we will have to. Fix and replace and fix or upgrade. Draper's Cove all the way down to Phase Three at some point in time.
Okay, so. Will it remain private or will it ultimately be dedicated to the city?
I I think we're indifferent. Last last time, I mean, I think we kicked this around with Roy and Eric. It was going to be public, I think, to the first turn that goes into Phase One. And after that, it's up in the air. We don't. We aren't concerned whether it's public or private. However, there are, as noted, forty houses down there that have been using that. There are other issues with water that we've got to resolve down there and so Phase Three is definitely. You know, I think it's gonna be. I'm not trying to avoid you, but we can dedicate what we own. However, it goes in a bunch, it goes into that neighborhood. And and there is a different situation and I do not know exactly what those folks. That live down there want to do. For one, none of those houses are in the city. And they need to be annexed and I don't think the residents have. Thought that that was a good idea. So there are some complications that call it the very tail end of the project. The bottom end of Phase Three that will help determine just exactly what's done on. On Draper's Cove. Either way, I think Trey can validate. The intersection works pretty well, Boggy Ford and Draper's Cove, even when it's fully built out. There were actually, I don't think any improvements made except. One time there was a, I mean, from Lincoln Cove to turn on, they were gonna transition in. But I think that's been dropped in lieu of other things.
Let me add this comment if it helps, Mr. Chair.
Yes, go ahead. Maybe that'll help, Mr. Brown.
Vista does not distinguish between the design and construction standards for private and public roads. They'll be built to the same inspected to the same standard regardless. The only relief they're asking for that is not recognized in our current subdivision regs. Is the ability to design to twenty mile an hour streets. And that that's why that that's not otherwise allowed unless you recommend approving. Yeah, that that's in their narrative. That's one of the, that's what they're asking for.
So that'll be, that'll be something that we need to consider today.
Well, it is in their request, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Uh huh, uh huh, okay, part of the detail plan. Okay, so I'm I'm. Grateful to learn that you own the street and that you'll be responsible for it if you damage it and you'll fix it. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, any other commission members have questions or comments for the applicant at this time? If not, we will move on to the public hearing and open that at eight thirty-two. And I would ask that those individuals who would like to speak. I'll I'll wait to see your. Unmuted mic and if you're on camera. You'll need to give me your name, address, and I'll try to take. Take them in order. And. Some of the people that I I can see, like I say, the screen's quite small. Is there somebody who would like to speak first and keep your, like I said, try to keep your comments. Around three minutes and if you would also. Try to just avoid, you know, any kind of, if someone's already made a very strong point. You know, just reinforce that you agree with that particular person. So if, who who would like to speak first? I see somebody raise their hand.
Yeah, this is John Avery.
Uh, John Avery, uh, and John, would you give us your your address, please, John?
Well, I live in, we, my wife and I live in Austin, but we have a home, a weekend home on at thirty thirty. Draper's Cove.
Okay.
And. I I think that that I've been a lawyer for fifty years and. Back in the seventies, I was the lawyer for the outside counsel for the Lago Vista subdivision. So you can blame a lot of that stuff on me and my old law firm. But anyway, long story short is that. This is, this Draper's Cove Road is an extremely substandard road. It's probably over, it's probably at least a half mile or or more longer. At no time in Austin or in Round Rock or anywhere else could you have a. Half mile or more. Cul-de-sac road essentially, which by the way, has no cul-de-sac. It it terminates into the Lago Vista fence. And police, fire, MS, everything else. And that road is owned by, I'm not sure. But maybe by the Firefly folks. It's it's the one that's past the. Amenity centers that parallels the lake, sure. And one of my comments would be that we we need to have a meeting with the developers. To see what in in the the interested parties there that. Will will not be on the road that is in your concept plan that would be improved. I think you you improve it down to. The five point nine acre park. Called the Community Beach, but it's the, it's the road that continues from there to the the west that. Where the more expensive homes are that. Is a continuing problem. So I'd like to request a meeting. It's it someone's convenience with the group to meet with several of the interested landowners. I think it'd be cordial and worth your time. But I, go ahead.
So thank you very, very much, John. I'm I'm sure that the. Though probably more than likely want to do that with you.
Right, I think if if the chairman would forward. To Mr. Gauzda, the email that I sent, it has my phone number and my email address. Also. The, one of the parks labeled as C. A and C three on the concept plan called the Community Beach. Was a highly contentious contentious issue by the. Forty plus homes that are down there. And it was actually litigated and the group lost. And so seven or eight of us. Actually went to Mr. Larry Vincent, who was the owner at that time and bought. Access easements to the so-called Community Beach. With that email that the chairman's going to forward you, you will see. At least my copy of my needed access to that park. And so one of my fundamental questions is. What is a quote, community park? Is that for the entire metro area or is that just for? Just for your subdivision?
Uh, John, if you will, I'll ask. Maybe Mr. Gauzda to. Reply to that question.
Which which Gauzda will be answering?
Dirk.
Dirk, okay.
Yes, sir. Happy to, on your first request, happy to have a meeting. I, we have wanted to kind of get through this PDD approval. Because a lot of what you need to fix your road, water, et cetera. Hinges on just this getting approval if the if.
Right, exactly. No, no problem with that.
We don't do anything.
I understand.
So I'll be happy to come down and meet with you guys. At, you know, here within the next thirty days or something. We'll, we'll, I'll talk to you. I'll contact you. We can talk through it. And maybe just kind of a open town hall thing and. There are just, as you know, there are, there are a lot of. Things to work out relative to, we do own the street, but you know, it's been encroached on and it's. And it's small places, it's large in places. So I think you'll agree, there's a, there's a lot of things to be resolved, but I think we can. Relative to the beach. We call it a beach because, you know, it's got. You have access on a fairly narrow road. We didn't see putting any large amount of. People on that. It is only going to be for residents of Firefly Cove. No public access. We didn't plan on any guest passes. But then, you know, that's all, and that'll all be handled through the HOA.
All right, then.
Right, well, I guess, I don't know, but I guess, but I guess my follow-up question, pardon me, Mr. Chairman. Is I assume that you're going to honor. The existing access easements that were previously granted that should be on your title with respect to the Community Beach.
The the short answers are sure if they're on title, absolutely. We're not, you know, I think easements down there, there are, there are numerous ones. Some very old and kind of undefined, like, yeah, you can have access across. My property to walk to the beach. I don't know if you've seen that one. I'm sure you have if you're an attorney. But no, we'll, we're not gonna, we gain nothing by coming in and saying, oh, you know. We're taking this over and you don't have a right to it.
We've never done that.
Yep, there's plenty of property there and I think it's only, but to us, it's not available to. Anybody on Constitution, for example.
Oh, of course.
Is the beach.
All right, well, thank you very much, Mr. Avery. Thank you, Dirk. And I'd like to move on to another individual that would like to speak.
Sure, this is Mark Markham. I pastor Grace Fellowship Church. That's right in front of your. Plan development. So we're looking forward to have the Firefly Cove homes built around there. Had a, had a kind of a two-part question. I'll make it quick. You know, there's a small private gravel road that runs alongside our property. And we have several youths who live back there who walk up to our church. For our youth activities to participate in and we're glad to have them. And we're hoping and anticipating like any church would that as you build more homes around there. That perhaps there will be more youth that want to come up to our youth activities. And we market to all new families who move into Lago Vista, just like the other churches do. So I wanted to find out what's gonna happen to the existing gravel road. And part B of that is, would you consider building a sidewalk? From one of your entrances. Kind of down towards our church. Now, that may sound like a selfish thing to ask, but the reason I'm asking that is. When we market to families and youth, oftentimes the parents, you know, if they're in walking distance of the church, just like now. Youth will walk to our church. So we currently have some youth that, you know, walk down the side of Boggy Ford Road to get to our church. Because the parents feel they're close enough. So we're thinking about the safety of all these houses around here, all the kids that are gonna be there. How we could work with you to perhaps get a safer pathway to our church. So the youth aren't tempted to ride their bikes or walk along Boggy Ford Road. Again, I know that sounds like a selfish thing, but. We're seeing it happen now and we know it's this more families coming in. We want the safest way possible should someone choose to have their youth walk or ride their bike to our church the way many. Do right now or some do right now.
Pastor Markham, uh, thank you for your comments and Dirk. Probably just as you would maybe want to meet with Mr. Avery that. You could investigate and consider the requests coming from Pastor Markham with Grace Fellowship.
Yes, sir, will do. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Who, uh? Somebody else?
Sure, I'll go ahead.
I see a hand going up there. That's Dan Powers.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much for your time. I'll try to make this as brief as possible and still voice our concerns as neighbors. As president of the Old Farm Property Owners Association, I actively represent ten owners that are in the ten, two hundred foot boundary. As well as the common areas with the two hundred foot boundary, which are owned by an additional thirty landowners. And we connect by water to Draper's Cove. And just quickly in regards to the two hundred foot boundary, when the primary issue is a cove development. It affects all homeowners in the Cove community, community. And two hundred feet is far too small a measurement for a cove specific attached property with common areas. And I wish the board would consider that in the future. Cox Hollow, which is the eastern boundary of the waterfront area for Firefly. Is a habitat for the blue heron and I realize that issue of wildlife is not per view of this committee. However, as the developers move forward, we ask that care be given to what exists and to blend as much as possible. With what is quite obviously a very quiet and peaceful cove presently. So moving on from that, the amenity pool and the pavilion is five hundred feet. From the Cox Hollow Great Blue Heron feeding and nesting area and roughly one thousand feet from what will be my back patio. And regarding sound and volume, which I understand is a PD enforcement issue. I still want to add that if the pool and pavilion areas proceed as planned. Our member homeowners would hope that the city will enforce volume and noise issues and concerns. But we request that the developer limit the addition of speakers or sound amplification in those public areas. So as to. Remove the volume of noise as much as possible. And it where it travels so easily, especially like on hillsides and across water. It's a common problem everywhere on the lake. But it doesn't have to be as you move forward and you build. So volume and noise from the pool and pavilion area is a main concern for the wildlife and the homeowners' peaceful enjoyment of their investment. And considering many of our homeowners and our landowners are retirees and approaching that stage, myself included. Keep in mind that we are potentially future customers of yours for some of your retirement properties and communities. So keep your future customers happy, please, sir. And another item is a concern with the safety of the community beach area. For the solo swimmers that may be venturing into what will be narrow water passage, which is the only access point. For our neighborhood boat ramp and other neighboring boat docks that are right there in that cove. As you must be fully aware, that cove is often a dry lake bed and it was for several years. The water level frequently drops to a point allowing only the narrowest of passage. And when that dries out completely, it's just, you know, what's a mud bed. Obviously, Lake Travis is not constant level. This is a shallow area right now and not exactly what I would market as a beach area. So much as the sales draw the lake is almost half the time, it's not there. If it was my development, I would not make, make the lake the central focus of the play space. If you add a playground, please put it farther up the quiet cove. We'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Uh, thank you very much, Mr. Powers and Dirk. I'm sure you will take his comments into consideration and. Of course, there's many more. Phases of this development to move forward. Be with the Planning and Zoning Commission as well as the City Council. Other. Other comments from the. From citizens out there, applicant. To the.
Yes, Stephen Briggs had a, had a, had a question.
Oh, Stephen, I'm sorry, I see up there. Yes, go ahead.
Hello, everyone. Hey, I'm moving from the Conestoga area and I got a couple of lots, Lot Thirty, Fifty-five and Lot Thirty. Fifty-six, some land there to develop and it, and it backs right upon Draper's Cove. I noticed you guys had said that you guys are doing single family homes, but also in no apartments, but does that also. Rule out multifamily home and duplexes? There are no plans to do anything to that nature, type of build out, is there? Are there?
Uh, refer that to Dirk. Dirk, you want to respond to Stephen?
Sure. We we have no plans for attached product. Be at for sale or for rent. Uh, smallest lot is forty feet by a hundred and twenty. So I mean, they'll all be detached.
Okay.
There was, there was multifamily in the current plan.
Yes.
And that has been removed.
Awesome. That was awesome to hear. Um, whatever be, I have any easement issues. I don't know if that's something I have to deal with the city of Lago since my property. Kind of backs upon. since my property kind of backs upon Draper's Cove and, and, and Copper Lane, Cooper Lane. I know you guys said a portion of that road would be private. I mean, I don't know if, if the residents building there would have any access issues as well. So I don't know where, that's something down the line we have to address as well.
I, I think we will.
Okay.
It's got, it's got a lot of pieces down there, and, and as I think Mr. Avery can attest. But, no, we're gonna, some point in time in the near future, we're gonna have to literally meet with everybody and say, okay, here's where the road is and what do you want to do? But I think we'll get there.
Thank you guys very much. It's very informative.
Yes, I see someone raising their hand.
Yeah, this is Bill McQ. My property is at 19710 Kalina Drive. Got a 10-inch track up there, and it looks like your SF3 property will be kind of surrounding me. So I guess I have a couple of questions. Kalina Drive is a dirt road right now, and so I'm just wondering if you guys will be-
All right.
I'm wondering if you guys will be modifying that particular road? I can't tell by your proposed plan.
Bill, I can, it's good to see you again. Been a while. No, we don't, you know, we're not somebody that comes in and says, oh, here, we're gonna, we're gonna build this and you can't touch it. That area will be, any place where there are public streets that we put in, say it's close to your property. And I think Roy could, could back this up. The PDD intends that we'll open that up for better circulation both ways, so that perhaps residents from here can go directly onto Constitution and vice versa, depending on where they're going. But, no, we're, we're gonna be inclusive and say, here, you know, if you want to tie in, you can tie in, and Phase 3 is, is a little more difficult because there's some topo down there. But then, as you know, there's some awesome views.
Okay, is it, is that in the Phase 3 section? Are those the lots that are gonna be 120 by 40?
They're certainly allowed, but any, any place where you got a view will, the size of the lots will increase.
Will those homes, that property there that backs up to mine, will they, will they be putting fences in the back, or are you guys gonna address any of that stuff?
It's, it's a detailed plan, but I'm, I'm afraid I can't, I can't answer. I don't know.
Okay.
Fences are not popular in our neighborhoods, especially when there's views because it blocks the view. But then, you know, Texas is full of cedar fences. So, we have not, I would say fences will be allowed probably despairingly through the community. Certain places where you certainly back up to another house, that's probably appropriate. But when you back up to open space, I can tell you that we don't see it that way. We don't, we don't care if fences, where you're backing up to open space or views.
Thank you, Dirk. All right. Any, any others with comments during the open public hearing? All right.
I'm sorry, I had one. Yeah, this is Susan Whitehead. I'm at 3009 and Booty 11 Draper's Cove, at the very bottom. I just had a couple of questions and one comment. On the homes that are on Draper's Cove, will their driveways be against drapers, so they'll be coming in and out, backing in and out against drapers? Or will that be their, their backyards? Just looking for clarification.
Along, it's, I could talk about planning all day long, but I won't. Draper's Cove, as you know, to the east side where those houses will go, if there's some places you can't put a house, so it's not a stream of houses going to Draper's due to topo. But where the topo relaxes, I think you're probably familiar, there's room for a house and then it drops off pretty quick. So in short, we won't be building another street in there to back the houses up simply because, you know, topography prohibits it. So they will access directly and onto Draper's Cove. That's our intent, but then Phase 3 doesn't have that part of it. Those are estates and need to be defined.
Thank you, Dirk.
It would just be Phase 1, is what you're saying?
No, there's Phase 1, and then Phase 3 that goes down to, I can't remember the house on the top of the hill there. But down to about there, you know where you can, anyway, that's, we'll put houses along there, then pass that Draper's Cove, standing where the mailboxes are and the trash goes. All that's gonna be different because there's flat land there and there's room to do different things.
Okay, so they will be entering and exit onto Draper's Cove. The other, just a comment regarding fences. I know that in Treviso, they only allow for the iron fences. So wood fences are not allowed in that community, and that's for the same purpose that you were just talking about regarding the views. So just a, a note there, if, if people did want to put fences, I would maybe limit them to the iron fences, so it allows for that openness, which I think would be beautiful in that neighborhood.
Thank you. All right. Want to see if there's any, I see someone raising their hand. If you want to go ahead and speak.
Hi, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is Paul Roberts. I have a question for the applicant. If I understood correctly, is it the estate lots that would have square foot, the, the square footage of the homes would be approximately 1,780 square feet? Was that for the estate section? That's one question of three. And then-
The short answer is, is that there's an 1,800 square foot minimum on the estate lots. And so, no, nothing would be that small. I would, we only have 45 of those, so by the, by 1,800s the minimum, I think you'll see houses at 1,800 and houses at 3,500. Just because, just because if you only want an 1,800 house, foot house, doesn't mean you don't have any money. I'm old and have houses, lots of bedrooms, and you know, and there are a lot of customers that would like a really nice small house and a great view.
And your second question, Paul?
Thank you. And this is just my, based on my recollection from your presentation last year, I was a little confused contrasting with this, with tonight's presentation. You, you spoke about your affiliation with Sunrise. But my recollection from last year was that Firefly Cove was your first development on your own, coupled along with your son. But the presentation tonight implied that, seemed to imply that that's not the case.
I have been, one, I'm, I'm an owner and a principal, so you cross over the lines often. I've been an employee and an owner of Sunrise Company since 1997. Even when I was with Brookfield, it was, I had obligations I could not get out of, but Sunrise Company is in my blood. And so even when I said, you know, this is our first project, I still intended to bring Sunrise in as the operating entity. Just because, you know, they're a great company and, and it fits, and off we go.
Thank you. And then just my last comment is, I, I agree, I would just agree with Commissioner Larry's comments about the impact of traffic and the timeframe involved in that on, on Bogget. Thank you. That's all.
All right. Well, unless I hear otherwise, I'm about to close the public hearing. I don't see or hear anyone else, so the public hearing is now closed at 8:58. And with that, we will open it up for discussion amongst the commission members. Tom, you want to go first?
Yeah, after hearing everything tonight, I guess, you know, I'm basically, oh, to say I'm willing to go with the, in the staff report with promoting Option B and the alternative recommendations. I think, I don't, I don't want to give blanket approval to the estate plan. I think that's something of, you know, when they come up with details, and we should look at separately rather than thinking, you know, everything's ready. So I think B meets the needs of what they're asking for. So that's where I'm, that's what I'm good with, I guess.
Thank you, Tom. Any other members of the commission with any discussion? Mr. Brown?
Thank you. I, I, I meant to say earlier, and I, but I'll say now that I am disappointed that the new PDD does not include the Lago Vista Brewery, which was in the, the first PDD, because I, I think it's something that Lago Vista could use. I'm, I share the comments about the traffic impact analysis, and I want one of the criteria with a potential acceptance suggested by Roy was, I'm having trouble scrolling to finding it. This is such a gigantic document, was that the traffic impact analysis needs to be, you know, followed through carefully with the city engineer. And I, I want that stipulation to remain in any approval that we make, because I, I'm very pleased by what I've seen that will happen within the community. But when the community members come and go, and when the construction vehicles come and go onto Boggy Ford, I, I sure do hope that that gets addressed carefully between Eric and their, and their people, so that I, I share Larry's comment that the sooner the better on the left turn lane. That I just don't see that this project can go very far without having a serious impact on, on the traffic flow on Boggy Ford Road without that left turn lane. And I don't care if it's at Draper's Cove, which will be the primary access for Phase 1, or if it's at the main monument entrance. But I certainly do want it soon. And other than that, I like the look of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard. And, you know, I, I also share your disappointment. I'll do whatever I can to drop off a six-pack of Polish swill to your house when I can, so. Any other comments from the commission? All right. Then I think we're at the point to make a recommendation regarding Item 3, 21-1878-PDD-MOD, that the Planning and Zoning Commission recommend approval to the City Council of Lago Vista, application in accordance with the following conditions. One, that all portions of the application be deemed to meet the requirements of concept approval, that all portions of the application except the estate lots be deemed to meet the requirements of the detailed plan approval, and that development standards of estate lots be subject to modification for consistency as part of the future required detailed plan approval, and the approval incorporates by reference satisfactory respond to pending TIA comments. And I'd just to verify with our city attorney if that recommendation in motion is satisfactory.
Well said, Mr. Chairman.
Say again, Erin?
Well said, sir.
Oh, well, thank you, Erin. Is there a second to that recommendation? It is seconded by Larry Hagler. And we will go ahead and ask if there's any further discussion?
Yes, please.
Yes, Mr. Brown?
I, I hate to do this to you, then, and this is not a test like, can you draw a clock that says 2 o'clock? Could you restate that so that I am sure that I understand what you proposed?
Well, let me make it real easy. If you'll just go to our potential alternative recommendations.
Okay, A.
If you'll go to B, go to B.
Go to B.
And if you read B, that's what I just proposed.
1, 2, 3, and 4?
I'm sorry?
1, 2, 3, and 4 under B?
Yes, sir. And the city attorney thought it was almost be, beyond. I, I'm almost speechless, Erin.
Well, now that everyone knows you were reading what someone else wrote, it's, some of the gloss has gone off of it. I have to say that.
I tried to pay attention, and I also was listening closely to our vice chair, Mr. Monahan. And I agreed based on everything we've heard from other participants and comments during the open public hearing, that what I was to state in Item B would be appropriate and acceptable. So it has been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? I don't see any further discussion of that.
Oh, I have, I have one other item for discussion. Do, do we need to mention, you know, Tom asked earlier, do we need to mention the, the name change?
No, we do not.
Thank you, Erin. Okay.
All right. Moving right along. What's, what say you, Tom Monahan?
Aye.
An aye. Mr. Jandro?
Aye.
And Ms. Davis? Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you very much. I forgot. We have a recusal. And Mr. Hagler, since you seconded? Is Mr. Solomon there? We seem to have lost him.
He's having technical problems.
Okay. All right. And Mr. Brown?
Aye.
And I'm trying to spot who else. I'm missing somebody.
Just yourself, sir.
You're missing Julian Charles, that's it.
I know, I know I'm missing-
And yourself.
But I have an aye vote from Mr. Monahan, correct?
Don't forget Mr. Zalewski.
Well, I'm just trying to count. 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, and myself. Okay. Six have voted. Is that correct?
No, it's not. Five have voted. Now that you have voted, five have voted.
Five of the seven are, have voted.
I'm, I'm sorry. I'm really having a hard time seeing the screen. There's so many lit up on there. Who are we missing? Who are we missing then?
Julie and Charles.
Julie recused herself. She's not going to vote.
Right. And Charles, we couldn't reach.
Charles, and Charles is lost in the, in cyberspace.
Much.
All right. So all five have voted. The recommendation passes to the City Council of Lago Vista, Texas. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Have a cold beer on me someplace, somewhere.
I'll have to get it from, I gave Richard my last six pack.
I'd like to add that I appreciated your presentation tonight. I think it was helpful to all of the community.
Well, thank you, sir. And I will follow up with all of these people.
Thank you much, Dirk.
Thank you and good night.
All right. I guess what I would like to do before we go into the Silvera's extravaganza, I would like to, we've, we've had numerous requests for a short break and we will resume at 9:16. We'll resume at 9:16, taking a short break.
I, I thought I told him that this was still on there just as a placeholder, Erin, but he must have forgot.
Yeah, we'll remind him.
Yeah. Well, like I said, you know, obviously the, you know, particularly with the, the, the moving target, every time we advertise, it's, it's a, it's a thrill ride. Well, that's what I'm trying to figure out, how in the world, and, and, you know, you know, Chris coordinates with the staff and, you know, sometimes it's Allison, sometimes it's Lynn. And, you know, do they, do the messages get through? Who knows? You know? But since I never see those, there's, there's no, there's no QC check.
Could have to work on that.
Ryan, Erin, thank you very much for all your help, all your guidance.
No problem. I'm just, I'm sorry. I went down the path that I could have asked, but it was a weekend. I didn't want to bug anybody on a weekend.
Well, there's two more workdays for me.
I hear you.
Anyway, we'll be back at you soon. And do you know when this will go to city council? You had mentioned this.
First Thursday of the month, which, and here we go again, you know, they're telling us, and it's kind of tongue in cheek. They tell me it's live, but then they make it real clear they don't really know. And, and that's getting to be problematic. I have to re-advertise and then, you know, errors like this can happen.
So I have, I have the September 2nd. Is that accurate? Okay. Are you going to have time to notice and all that stuff?
Oh, we already did. I re-noticed for the second. Yours is the only one that didn't get screwed up, is my point. And I-
I was sitting here going, oh, please.
Yeah, don't, and I have no explanation how they got yours and didn't get the other two.
Welcome to Lago.
Erin, I got a question for you.
Yes, sir.
With respect to these meetings and stuff, you know, we said, someone mentioned the county may impose mask mandates, but the governor says no masks. So where does the city have to sit when it comes to this type of conflict between county and state?
That's, that's kind of the problem.
That is a difficulty.
And with these lead times, they make it impossible when they change their mind or fling something new at us and, you know, even the money gets to be substantial, you know? These, when I have to re-advertise with no notice and have to use the statesman, it gets up there pretty quick.
So one of the things that we're investigating is the possibility of doing hybrid meetings so that those folks who don't want to be in close proximity to others can do that. Until we get relief through the AG's office and the governor, the governing body will have to be in the public place. But hopefully we can arrange for some hybrid version of the meeting where the public doesn't all have to be there. We haven't worked out that kink yet. So the meetings will be, at, at this point, everything starting September 1st will be published as a in-person meeting at City Hall. Depending on the litigation that I expect to see between the county and the state level government, we'll have to see how that plays out as to where, what the city's obligation is. As it stands, the, I believe based on my quick reading of the latest documents to come out of Travis County, it's at, the, the mask mandate is limited to Travis County-related buildings. So it would not extend directly to the city. We have left the doors open. We are, we have not closed City Hall again. We do recommend masks. I will tell you the, the one entity or part of the city that does have the authority to require masks is our municipal court. I have not heard from our judge about what his preference is going to be for upcoming docket next Tuesday. My expectation is that we have plenty of masks here at, at City Hall and that he may require them. If we do have a lot of folks show up for the actual docket, it's highly likely that the prosecutor will be wearing a mask to minimize the amount of contact that we have with the public and for, for health and safety purposes.
Not kind of hard, please.
Very much so.
Hey, thanks for expounding upon that, Erin. Can you answer some of my questions I had too?
You bet.
All right. Ladies and gentlemen, boys and girls, it's 9:16 and we're going to pick up the pace here. Item number five on our agenda is consideration of a recommendation regarding potential amendment to Section 23 of Chapter 14 of the Lago Vista Code of Ordinances to amend the procedural and substantive requirements related to short-term rental of residential properties. And I'll just go ahead and read the note that's in the agenda. This item will be included on future agendas pending completion of the proposed ordinance amendment and a subsequent recommendation by the commission. So I guess at this point, we're to continue the public hearing. Is that correct, Erin?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. There's some work to be done. I'm working on coordinating with Mr. Brown and, and possibly Mr. Jandro to have some discussions about some adjustments that we can make to the proposed language that will make it functionally better for moving forward and to address some questions that I've received regarding some of the language and how it interplays with some of our other legal obligations. So anticipate bringing this back to you. If we can get, get the revised documentation next month, we'll bring it back. Mr. Brown has offered to assist in certain ways and so I'm going to coordinate with him to see if we can't have it ready for you for next month, sir.
All right. So since it is a public hearing, should we see what public comments are there first before we move on to any discussion amongst the commission members? So any public comments at this time, those that would like to comment on this item regarding short-term rental residential properties? Well, we continued the public hearing at 8:17, I'm sorry, 9:17. And we're going to close the public hearing at 9:18. Now we'll open it up for discussion and I guess, Erin, I, I, I looked at some of the items in there and one in particular, and I know Mr. Brown was not very much in favor of this overlay item. Could you tell me how you establish an overlay and is it something that can be done after the fact? After the ordinance?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
I, I guess just to ask, can it be an ongoing option that it doesn't have to be, overlays don't have to be established immediately? Sorry.
Sure. That's a great question, sir. And you are correct. It does not have to be established immediately. An overlay can be established on a later date based on a documented need or an anticipated need to address that particular area. If you do not establish an overlay at the initial stage, then the ordinance would apply citywide. And so that's one thing to be cognizant of. Whatever you adopt without it, if it, if it is only, if it, if there is no overlay would apply across the board. If you want to establish some specific requirements to address a particular issue or if you only want this to apply in a particular area, that would be established very similar to you, to establishing zoning districts because that's essentially kind of how that works. There would be a map. We would have the, the specified area. There would be a description of where that applied and then any specific requirements that applied in that overlay area that differed from the regular portion of the ordinance that would apply to the remainder of the city.
Thank you. And I guess the reason I brought it up was I had spoken at length with some of the people in Jonestown and they do have overlays and they explained some of the reasons why they made an overlay in a couple of different areas. And I'm not jumping up and down in favor or totally against it. I just wanted to know that if it's something we could hold out there for the future, should the need arise, that we'd be capable of doing that.
Yes, sir. Would be an ordinance amendment is how it would be effectuated.
Thank you. And I see that Dr. Brown would like to comment.
I'd like to say that my appreciation for the function of overlay districts has changed from a month ago, having read how some other communities have handled that. And one of the concerns that I had that would probably come to mind for all of you is that if we tried to create an overlay district and someone within that district had already been functioning as a short-term rental, what would we do? And they can be permitted to continue sort of a grandfather as a non-conforming entity within the overlay district and then should one of two things happen, either they quit renting or the property changes hands, then that non-conforming status would expire and they, that house would join the intent of that overlay. So it, it, you know, if there's a group out there that can tell us that they want to be excluded and tell us why, I, I don't, I don't see that that's a problem. I don't think that the commission should oppose that if someone wants to, it's good. The one thing I would say is we don't want spot zoning. We don't want it polka dotting through the neighborhoods, up and down streets. It would sort of have to be some area for which there was significant consensus.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Yes, Tom?
I just want to add, the, I left on a four-week vacation the morning after our last meeting. So I really had a chance to look at this. So I will take a look at it closer in the next month to provide some feedback.
Were you in a short-term rental while you were out there, Tom?
That was my question as well.
I was.
Well.
It was very nice.
Then you should, you should know all there is to know.
Any other comments regarding this item right now? I know we're going to bring it back to us. I had a, I marked a, a couple, couple of things here. I guess one of them, there was a comment, this, the thing about the neighbors being able to appeal. I, I guess, I guess what I, what I would like to see is that when a person applies, they're not going to be denied because the guy across the street doesn't want anybody there. They want to be able to know that it is going to be a short-term rental. And in the event of an emergency and nobody's dialing 911, they would know who to contact. And with that said, the, I don't know about that 10-mile or one hour. I guess, I guess I like the idea of the, the timing more than the miles.
I have, having read from some other communities, I've seen that that's a more popular way to handle that, Gary. And mileage, you know, if you just draw a circle, you could get, you could include Lakeway in a, in a 10-mile circle. So we don't want to do that. I would like to comment about a couple of things about this. That it seems to require that the, only the owner and, excuse me, let me start over again, that the property should be a homestead, which I, I think is no longer a useful way to handle short-term rentals because there's so much investment property that is set up in that form. And, and that the, the owner, it seems to me, should not have to be a natural person. It seems to me it should be allowed that it can be an investment group or an LLC or a corporation that wants to, wants to own. This is a, this is a system that has evolved in the last 20 years from a simple peer-to-peer format where you just kind of let people know that they could couch surf at your place and away you went. And, but now it involves people buying lots of property that they manage either themselves or through management companies and that And that we, we are currently way behind them. They are going off without us with setting up how they would like to do it. And we need to establish some rules, but I, I think recognizing it as a very viable business enterprise and currently the only way that you can really visit Lago Vista today. We, we need to help support it and, and bring it under the tent so that we can collect our hotel occupancy tax and help regulate for the benefit of the, and safety of the, of the people who would come and use these properties.
Mr. Chairman, my question for the commission would be if, if we are, if homestead is not one of the eligibility requirements, which doesn't, you know, doesn't necessarily have to be, I threw out some other potential eligibility requirements that were in that attachment. I'm not hearing any resounding opinions about whether or not any of those would be something you'd be interested in or if you have alternate, alternative ideas about eligibility. If you want to leave it wide open, we can certainly do that. That's a pretty common thing. I just didn't want to, want to make sure we can kind of plug in those pieces that fit best so that there's less sausage making, if you will, when we come, come back to you next time. So if you have other ideas, opinions, thoughts on any of the aspects, I'm taking notes and we'll make those tweaks along with the feedback about getting from your fellow commission members.
Thank you, Aaron, and I, I guess, you know, going to rely upon you some with some of those examples in there, but I, believe it or not, tend to agree some with Richard Brown on having, having this somewhat open, because I was confused about, you know, homestead exemption. Well, you're not, you're, you, you wouldn't have a homestead exemption. I know my, my son has rental property in Lago Vista and he, he does not have short-term rental, but still, you know, he, he does not have any, any homestead exemption on that property. He has it on his, you know, personal home, so.
Yeah. Go ahead, Tom.
I agree with Richard too, you know, we need to leave it open, I think. A homestead is too limiting.
Yeah, and back to that one-hour thing, you know, my rental property in Ria Dosa, I got a call about a rowdy party. And there was no way that I could respond in an hour to take care of it. So I just dialed 911 and hope, hope you weren't in.
Do you gentlemen, generally feel that an hour is appropriate, 30 minutes is appropriate? Is there particular timeframe that you think might be best, might best suit our current situation? If time is the more applicable in your mind way to go?
Yeah, I think the one hour.
One hour.
Because if it's, if it's something terribly serious, the responsible party is probably going to call the police.
I have a question I would like to ask the commission. Some communities have multiple kinds of licensing for this and even some that are kind of small. I tried to avoid, you know, the, the big cities because they have such complex administrative units that they can do whatever they want, but there, there is a type of short-term rental that involves the owner continuing to live in the unit while the visitor is there and you only have access to one or more bedrooms and the kitchen. But and some communities like to differentiate that, they call that home sharing as opposed to short-term rentals. And they call where, where you get the whole house a, a short-term rental and then, of course, hotels and part of this code would also involve hotels because of their shared need for being involved in the, how you write the hotel occupancy tax rules. But since we don't have any hotels, it's kind of a something we don't have to address right now. But does anybody have any thoughts about whether we should have a two-tiered system for home sharing versus home, whole-home rental, what's traditionally called a short-term rental? And I'll, I'll tell you what the background of that is. You probably would be dealing with a, a much simpler system for home sharing and likely even the homestead exemption could be enforced there and, and the owner would be present and could moderate all sorts of things that you otherwise have to address with a short-term rental rule.
In home sharing, bed and breakfast, like B and B?
Similar, yeah, that doesn't have to be. You can, you can do your own cooking, bring your own food, do your own cooking and just have access to the kitchen and the bath and, and one bedroom. And not necessarily eat meals with your host.
Well, how much do you want to? I don't know, you get too many categories and we're starting to micromanage things a little bit too much, I think. But I agree, I think distinguishing between short-term rental where it's the whole house versus a B and B could be that general category to, to maybe include some of the other things you're talking about where if you're essentially there with the owner, you're in that general, as a general category. Right?
Yes. It, it, it adds a, an, an additional layer of administration onto the development office and since they are kind of looking for work, I would, I would say we shouldn't worry about that.
I, I guess the question is, and maybe for Aaron, that, that, that could always be amended and added at another time. Isn't that correct?
Sure. Yeah, I fully anticipate that we will establish one set of regs and like many cities around us, will want to amend them to adjust over time and, and that is another aspect that could be added. We could tweak it once we knew how well the base system functions. I mean, the, the big driver of this is to establish really kind of health and safety rules, making sure that these properties have the proper safety requirements. You know, we're not letting people stay in unsafe places, that there's opportunity for the, us to have more information to regulate them so that we can be sure we're collecting the hot tax from those entities. And those were the two main drivers. We can always make it more robust or complex as that need arises.
Thanks. I just see this whole thing of kitchen sharing and, you know, maybe a divided couch or two TV sets. Remember my, my step-nephew was here and wanted to use the kitchen and so badly, a grease fire in the sink, I mean, really bad, so. Anyway, I digress. Larry?
Yes, Aaron, what? How long can you supposedly rent and still call it short-term rental?
I think typically they say up to 30 days. And I think, did we put the 30-day in there?
It's got the 30-day in there.
Yes, and, and that's in the state law as well. That's where that came from.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Aaron, is that enough for you for now?
I guess the one other question I would love to get your feedback on is the occupancy classifications. Do you feel like the type one, type two, type three, meaning eight adults, eight children? Type two is eight adults and eight children, but it's not subject to the homestead. It sounds like the homestead thing does, isn't really a, a focus. So we would eliminate that. And then anything more than 17 people, regardless of their age, would kind of be looked at a little differently. Because though we do have some very large short-term rentals. So do you have any other thoughts about occupancy classification and kind of that, that dividing line? These numbers came from our building official who did work in, previously in Jonestown and has seen that, and this is kind of his thought process on kind of where that dividing line might be.
Are you using square footage to, to determine occupancy or something like number of bedrooms or?
So they're not strictly, but they will, the evaluation of the type of, how many can occupy a particular bedroom that will be analyzed to ensure that there is sufficient space for the number of occupants that are requested. I just didn't know if you had any thoughts about, do we need to distinguish how we authorize these particular facilities or, or homes based on occupancy? Is there a threshold above which we need to add something that you see it or, or have additional restrictions? Or a different fee structure? A lot of times when you have these very, very large homes, the, the reviews that are conducted might need to be a little more intense because you have larger gathering spaces, more bedrooms, more, you know, other things that need to be looked at. So that's, that's what we're trying to gauge is, is where, you know, based on occupancy class, do we need to establish occupancy classifications? And if we do, for the type of permit that you get, to determine the type of permit you get, what are the gauges for that? What, where, where would you be comfortable? With regard to establishing, you know, kind of where's the, where's the dividing line?
It's a very common theme amongst the local communities like Ground Rock, Georgetown that kind of define that, that we can go off of?
I don't know that that's a necessary, that's a commonality with others that I've really come across, but it was something our building official felt kind of passionate about in, in that, in his experience, once you get above a certain number of people, the potential for issues, noise parties, disruptive behavior becomes greater. I don't necessarily think that that needs to be a factor for how we authorize them. But maybe there are some notification, you know, the notification zone gets bigger when you have a, a property, you know, there may be some other things. Obviously, we're, the inspectors are going to look for the same things. They're going to make sure that there's sufficient space in each of the sleeping rooms to constitute appropriate space for the number of people that they're asking to have authorized. They're going to be looking for all of the same health and safety items that are required, fire extinguishers, proper number, proper exits and egress from the rooms that are considered sleeping rooms. None of that's really going to change. But if there's some, some regulatory issue that you see when you have very large facilities, large houses, do you think that there needs to be some difference in the way that we regulate them or classification that they fall into for permitting purposes?
I have.
I kind of liked Tom's, Tom's comment about square footage. You know, maybe, maybe use that as some guidepost.
One, one community that I read about, and I can't tell you right offhand who it is now, but they had a limiting factor of 1.5 daytime guests per overnight guest. So that four people can't go and rent a house or a condo that is only designed to accommodate for, but then invite 15 or 20 friends to come out and we'll just put kegs in the yard and enjoy the pool and the, and the lake. So I thought that was a helpful thing to look at. I don't know if 1.5 is the right number. But that's what they, that's what they used.
So if there was a violation of that, then would, would, would it fall on the renters or the landlord?
Rented, the unit would get the violation, would get the ticket. The you know, it depends on what the, what the issue was. So if there was a rowdy party and, and it was a noise violation kind of issue, the person's causing the noise violation would get it, but there would also be a notification to the property owner regarding that particular property. Any violations of the kind of health and safety and those other requirements? Would the big focus is on the property owners because we, the real goal is that the property owners the property owners, we want them to be the ones to monitor who they rent to and to kind of self govern or self regulate when it comes to that. So I think one of the things we'll have to look at as far as the penalties and violations, obviously if it's a violation of this particular ordinance, it's likely going to fall on the, the property owner. But certain things, certainly that are somewhat beyond the control of the owner could fall on the actual occupants, noise, things like that. Lewd behavior.
I read that there, there's often a conflict when you try to enforce those kinds of rules against the owner. Because he, the owner often feels as though it's very difficult to be responsible for the behavior of his, of his tenant and so if you set up a penalty system whereby if, if the owner accumulates a number of violations and you want to impose a penalty while you can't rent for some period of time, or you may lose your license altogether to operate a, a short-term rental. They'll, they'll be incentivized, but they'll also feel as though sometimes it's very difficult for them to control. But I, I certainly agree with Aaron that we can't But I certainly agree with Aaron that we can't, we cannot, we cannot get involved in removing any of the responsibility of the owner for what goes on on the owner's property. Even if the police have to come out and enforce the law.
Julie, did you have a comment?
I was just going to add to Richard to say, and we have to consider that most of these folks are are not authorized, are not directly approving who's renting, right? They're going through third-party vendors who have their own requirements. So, I agree with him that penalizing them that would just detract from their ability to have guests, really. I think it's, it would be difficult for them to be able to.
I agree, and I think that's along what Mr. Brown was saying. Have we addressed that fairly well for you, Aaron?
Yes, sir. I guess one final comment would be, you know, we put this, I put this initially together and bring it to you because our short-term rental ordinance falls under your purview. I think ultimately what this may end up, what may end up happening is, once we have this established, we may end up doing an amendment or ultimately adopting the actual regulations as a business regulation under a different chapter that may not necessarily fall within your purview. But there certainly is an aspect of this because it is a zoning regulation. There's part of it that is a zoning regulation. So, if there is something that's specific to particular areas or zones, for example, I definitely want to get your input on that piece, and that would remain solely within the zoning ordinance. The other parts of it may end up in the business regulations because essentially what we're doing is creating a permit for a business in, in particular zones. So, if there's something that you want to treat differently for areas of town where maybe we have mixed, a lot more mixed use, that might be something that you want to consider. And I'll look to see if there's, if there is examples from other cities that you might want to take from. But if you have thoughts about that, I'd be very interested to hear.
We'd have to address the island, you know, they, they're the island zone where the zoning authorizes short-term rentals. So, you know, I don't know if they just stay grandfathered or you would add a new business regulation that would require them to now get a permit or, you know.
Yeah.
That's my understanding. They'd have to get permitted.
That's right.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
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 And that's one of the reasons why you want to do it as a business regulation, because we can come in and add that we're not changing their zoning per se, but we want to add that business regulation, require the permits, make sure that they have all the health and safety, meet all the health and safety requirements. That's the big driver.
If it did go to the business ordinances out of zoning, then they would essentially be grandfathered. If everything stayed right in the zoning ordinance itself, they'd effectively be grandfathered or non-conforming or something like that.
It would become a non-conforming.
Okay.
Okay, we'll continue working on it and bring back something.
Thank you very much, Aaron. You think that'll do it for now?
I'd like to add one thing, please, Gary.
Oh, go ahead, Richard.
Thanks. One of the things about getting this started, that Tom was talking about relative to the island, is no one wants to go first because it puts that rental entity at an economic disadvantage to people who are not paying, collecting and paying the tax. The tax can become a big part of somebody's decision about what, about what they rent. If you're going, if you're going to rent for two weeks or so, and you can compare two properties that are comparable, but one is not going to add 6% to the bill. Well, and that 6% is just for the city. There's an additional state tax that people are supposed to be collecting. And I noticed that a few people in Lago Vista are collecting the state portion, but nothing for the city. And so nobody wants to be in that category of I'm conforming with the law and I'm collecting the taxes and my neighbor is doing the same thing that I'm doing, but is not collecting and charging taxes. And so we have to figure out a way to identify who all of the short-term rental owners are and try to get everyone on the same footing. Otherwise, it's very difficult to get compliance from just a few.
I anticipate that there will be an enforcement initiative with an amnesty period for those folks to come forward, get your permit, start collecting your bed tax and remitting that to the city. And then after that time, our code enforcement folks will be contacting them. And we'll be going after them for payment of those funds. Because it's significant dollars, several hundred thousand dollars.
How much are we collecting right now in hotel tax?
I don't have that number, but I know that we have, one of Roy's staff has looked at that issue. Roy, do you know if Lynn had that number? Has she given that to you? Roy's probably checked out.
While you're waiting on an answer from Roy, I'd be interested in the number of folks that are managing their rental themselves versus, again, going through a third party. Because when those third parties mandate it, they require the tax, I mean, they set the tax rate and they require that it's included. Not that that means that they're paying the city, but I think that'd be a neat way to, or a possible way to track it.
I would like to say that that's not always correct, Julie. I have, have used a lot of short-term rentals. And I know for sure that I always go through either VRBO or Airbnb. And I know that a lot of the properties that use those two platforms are not charging or paying taxes, or they are only paying the state portion. I know that for sure.
Well, I'm just saying maybe that's an easier way to track, that you can require some kind of.
Oh, yeah, to go find them? Oh, yeah, I agree. I agree. You're absolutely right. We can find their listings.
Right. And that was kind of what started this conversation. We had an awful lot of listings and we were collecting almost no hot tax. And we were looking at people that were promising to do all these things and never happened. And we start, you know, when they were not performing is why we decided to take a hard look at it. But like I said, the hotel tax collection was virtually nonexistent.
All right, are we ready to move on? It appears that way. All right, we're going to move on to the design review applications without a public hearing. The first one is consideration of a design review. Oh, this is 21-1875, consideration of the design review approval in accordance with section 6.105 of chapter 14 of Lago Vista Code of ordinances for a proposed warehouse at 9313 Rolling Hills Trail, Barque Ranches, section 15-A, lot 15146.
Yes, are you ready for me?
Yes, sir.
This one's pretty straightforward. There's a number of little minor violations that can be corrected fairly easily. And, you know, if they need some assistance and showing how to do that, it's not really, you know, very difficult. The one that needs mentioning perhaps more than others, even though the idea of a parking variance is not something that is in front of you, it kind of relates to something that is in front of you. You know, you got to understand that when somebody's talking about creating a facility and reducing it down to two parking spaces, one of which is required to be a handicap space, remember, you really only have one parking space available to the public. So, you're talking about a three-bay tenant warehouse and really only having one parking space. Not only do I think that's a tough sell, I don't think it's really necessary. I think you can fix that problem. And at the same time, you know, they, you know, they might be able to justify a reduction from four to three. And that's certainly within their province. But mainly what I was getting at is something that is in the design review criteria. You know, basically what you have is, is these overhead doors and the parking spaces kind of all in one place. And every, it's, you know, there's no real separation. You know, one of the criteria there is intended to say, look, once you park your car and you walk to the door, you're not expected to have to dodge traffic. And that's one of the things that this layout doesn't really do, but that a different layout would accomplish. So, you know, depending on where the board wants to go, we have no problem if you want to do it like you have past design reviews. You know, allow the staff to help them correct it and just get those items eliminated. Once again, they may choose to still seek a parking variance, and they certainly have the right to do so. But like I said, the real issue to me is, you know, does the overhead doors in the places where people park, do they have to all share the same space? And I don't think they do.
Questions from any of the commissioners? Tom?
Yeah, the parking variance, I mean, because as I understand, variances, you know, can't create the problem and then ask for creating a price for variance to a problem you're going to create. So, wouldn't it technically be difficult to get a variance for the parking?
I think so, particularly in light of the fact, like I said, if you think about it, you're proposing a facility with one parking space.
Yeah.
I would think it would be important to point out to them, they're going to be trying to attract tenants. So if their tenants are not going to be able to have parking available, I'd certainly move on to another facility.
And honestly, and I don't know how much y'all could follow what I was talking about in the narrative. It's really hard to describe a drawing in a paragraph, but it's a lot easier to draw it. But, you know, Aaron gets mad at me when I start volunteering, you know, design services without being asked. So, we're hoping they will ask for some assistance and we'll show them some ideas how they might be able to avoid that and solve all these problems. We're of the opinion that they're easily solved.
Richard?
Thank you. Roy, regarding parking, is the, the zoning is not clear to me because you, in it, you say it's currently light industrial and it, it's changing to C4. If it becomes C4, won't the parking requirement change? Won't they potentially be able to operate commercial enterprises within these warehouses as opposed to just storage? And therefore, wouldn't the parking requirement be based on the kind of enterprise they operate out of their warehouse?
It is the kind of enterprise they operate. And if they do change the nature of the operation, the parking regulations in 7.3, they don't refer to the zoning, they refer to the use. So, as long as it's a warehouse, they have this requirement. If they change to a different type of retail, they have to, they have to add parking. You're correct. It becomes a zoning violation. And they have a CO. If only, we'll issue a CO for a specific use. And if they start operating a different use, they'll be a violator.
So if someone is selling out of their warehouse unit and have the public come to them, then in addition to the parking for the tenant.
But if they were wholesaling out of a warehouse, that's a different creature, but you're right. If they start retailing out of one of those spaces, yes.
So, Roy, we could actually defer this and have them spend more time to get their act together.
If that's where you want to go, it's up to you.
Okay.
We can, we can hand, like before, you know, if you want to defer it to staff to get it fixed, to where it meets all the requirements, we're willing to do so. If you want to see again yourself, that's your prerogative.
I would suggest that if, say, in the staff report, if A gives conditional flexibility for staff to get them to fix everything before they can do anything, we should consider that because we've already loaded ourselves up for the next meeting by deferring two agenda items. And I don't know how many more is going to be on there. So, I would say just to, just from that perspective of keeping, trying to keep a reasonable load on us for the next meeting, I think A would allow staff to fix things before they actually can proceed.
In other words, we would go ahead and approve the application, but the four items really need to be complied before they could move forward.
Correct.
All right.
Yes, sir.
What say you, Roy?
I'm good either way. I mean, like I said, we don't mind doing that. And I do not disagree with the issue. If we had light agendas more recently, I might be more inclined to bring them back. That doesn't appear to be on the horizon.
Doesn't appear that way. All right. Any further discussion or questions at this point? If not, let me just let's, I'll go ahead and make a motion that we approve the application subject to a revised plan and building design submitted to the Development Services Department staff that complies with the following conditions. Eliminate paving wider than 30 feet that encroaches into any drainage or public utility easement. Complies with the landscaping requirements of section 20 of chapter 14. Complies with parking requirements of section 7.30 of chapter 14. And includes a stormwater detention design that complies with section 3.1401 of chapter 3. and includes a stormwater detention design that complies with section 3.1401 of chapter three and the site development plan approval required by chapter 10.5 reviewed by the city engineer or their designated. Anybody want to second that?
Second.
Thank you, Don. And, uh, any further discussion on this?
Yeah, just now we, we add to it that it's P and Z case number 21-1875.
Okay, I thought we did that. But all right, that should cover it. Correct, Aaron?
Yes, sir.
Thanks. All right. In favor, uh, your vote, Richard?
Aye.
And Don?
Aye.
Larry?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Motion carries, uh, six. Charles is, uh, in cyberspace. Moving on to number seven, 21-187, the consideration of a design review approval in accordance with section 6.105 of chapter 14 of the Lago Vista Code of Ordinances in addition and renovations to the Lago Vista Elementary School at 20311 Dawn Drive, Lago Vista Elementary School subdivision lot 2055A. Roy, you want to start out?
Yes, sir. And, uh, I, I would, you know, like to commend the, the, the design team. Quite frankly, it was, it was nice, uh, not to have a whole lot to say about one of these for a change. There, there was a couple of questions that were a little unusual, uh, but they were easily resolved. I, I think all of you did, however, uh, get the email message that they were talking about, eliminating the, the pitched roof on one of the buildings. And I think we sent that by email, but that's not really something that's in front of you. You know, if, if, if the building had no windows on it, it would have been, but, uh, the, the roof is technically not, not something that's dictated by anything we have in our design criteria. There was a little confusion about, uh, a couple of the light fixtures. Their lighting designer clarified that, uh, very quickly. There is another anomaly that really does, is not in front of this board, but they are seeking permission, uh, to put some of their, uh, protected tree replacements at another campus and, uh, at the high school specifically. Our ordinance doesn't really provide for that. But, uh, in, in this case, when they, when they have, you know, an appropriate place for it, we have no objection to that and we're going to support them in a request to the city council to allow that to happen. You know, the, the reason the, the ordinance doesn't allow it basically is you don't want, you know, a, a home builder or somebody else to buy inexpensive lot that, that's in the middle of nowhere that nobody will see and just load it up with all the trees they can't fit on their other property. That, that's not what these guys are doing, and so we don't have an objection to that. I will, I believe the architect as well as the superintendent, they, they were both here for a minute ago.
Well, I see that Darren Webb is, uh, he's muted, but, uh, might be out there. Hi Darren.
Yes, hey Gary, I'm here. As lo, as well as our civil Terry Haygood is here as well as, uh, Jason Andrews, our architect.
And hi, this is Brad Sims with Studio 1619, where the landscape architects on the project.
Thank you very much. First of all, any commission members, uh, have questions of, uh, the staff? None for the staff? Any questions for, uh, uh, the, the team? Superintendent Webb? Any questions for them? Uh, Tom?
I just, curiosity is how many more students are we trying to accommodate here? I'm just curious.
We're going to bring the fourth and fifth grade, uh, back over like they were about five, five, five or six years ago. And so this will become a, a kindergarten through fifth grade like it was, uh, back before the high school building was built. So we're looking at about eight, 800 kids, uh, or so, give or, give or take, uh, on maximum, uh, enrollment there.
Okay.
Richard, did you have?
No, sir.
All right. No, uh, questions, comments from the, from members of the commission at this time? Then, uh, I guess regarding, uh, item, uh, 21-1897, 20311 Dawn Drive, Lago Vista Independent School District, that the planning zoning commission approved the application, subject to, uh, formal approval to allow required protected tree replacements to be planted on the Lago Vista High School campus in a location indicated on submitted landscape plan. Anyone care to second that motion?
I'll second.
Seconded by Richard Brown. Any further discussion? No further discussion? And, uh, Tom, I, uh, so many votes, yes?
Yes.
And Richard Brown?
Aye.
Don John Dro?
Aye.
Julie Davis?
Aye.
Larry Hagler?
Aye.
And Gary Zaleski votes aye. Motion carries. Thank you for being so patient Darren and the rest of the team there.
You bet. Thank, thank you guys for your support.
They did a really nice job on a really difficult site too. Uh, I haven't seen the rest of them, but as much as I studied this one, but this was a tough problem. They, they handled it well.
Hey Darren?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
They ever get the clock fixed?
When you say the clock, which clock?
The clock on the backside of the elementary school that's never worked. It's, I, I take that back. It's correct twice a day.
Well, that's true. Uh, you know, Gary, that's a good question. I don't think it is. I'll be totally honest with you.
I don't know.
Get that fixed during construction.
It's, it's an ad alternate to get repaired.
There you go.
Good deal. It's, it's only the little things that bother us, I guess.
Right.
All right. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you guys.
All right. Item number eight. The consideration of a zoning district change recommendation from P2 Park and Greenbelt District passive to R4 multifamily residential made by the Planning Zoning Commission on June 10th, 2021, and remanded the city council on July 15th, 2021 for specific findings in accordance with section 13.20D of chapter 14 of Lago Vista Code of Ordinances regarding the property located 20806 Bonanza Street and undesigned tract of approximately 2.17 acres within the Lago Vista Travis Plaza. And, uh, Roy?
Well, I was going to, uh, beg Ms. Silbera to kind of walk you through this. She was a, a, a much more active participant in, in the discussion at city council. And, you know, I, I'm liable to not get something quite right if I take a stab at it.
All right. Uh, yes, uh, I thought this issue was over and done and I guess not. So Aaron, if you would, uh, help us through this?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. The one thing, the one task that you are asked to perform tonight is to, um, provide findings, um, as, um, at, if you find so in regard, in accordance with section 13.20, um, D, right, um, given that this particular piece of property, um, is not, does not match what is listed in the rebut, requested change, does not match what is listed in the comp plan. In the future land use map, that's part of our current comp plan. There are some additional findings that you have to make. Um, and so, uh, that is the one task that you have tonight. This is not a public hearing. However, because the item is on your agenda in accordance with the Open Meetings Act, you're required to allow for public comment. So, uh, I would, uh, recommend that you, uh, allow public comments on this particular item and then go through the procedures to make any findings that you deem appropriate, such that this could be sent back to the city council with your, um, recommendation either in a, um, if it's the same as, as you made it previously, or if based on your findings, you have to make a alternate, uh, or different recommendation than a motion on that.
Uh, thank you very much, Aaron. Before we, uh, move on, any of the commission members, uh, need, uh, further clarification from, uh, our attorney? Richard?
Aaron, is the, the issue about the, uh, the park, the, um, and, and how it came about, is that the only thing that we are to consider tonight? Not revisit any of the other discussion or? And, and I'm mostly interested in that question from the standpoint, not of the commission, but of public comment?
So, um, you know, if you want to consider public comments, you know, as if it impacts your thought process in, when making the findings under, um, 1320D, that's certainly within your purview. But this is not a public hearing. The previous comments have already been submitted and should be part of, part of your thought process when you go through and analyze and make findings in accordance with that particular section.
Okay. Thank you.
Any, anyone else have, uh, questions for, uh, uh, our attorney? Not you, Tom?
Yeah. Now, uh, 1320 basically says, we just confirm there's no other use for the, real use for the property is one criteria. And I think that was discussed and determined when the city first asked for this to reclassification. And we, that's one. Two, it's, uh, appears like unlikely that it'll ever be developed as parkland, given the topography is not really suitable for parkland. And, uh, so in item three of 1320D, it would seem that if there is someone willing to take the property off the commission, the city's hands for, uh, for useful development, then this, what we approved the last time seems to be an appropriate classification.
Thank you, Tom.
And Aaron, if others agree with me on that, would we have satisfied that requirement then?
I think, um, yes, sir. I think the motion, um, it, were to, if someone were to make it and they concur with, uh, the statements that you've made, would just need to include those, those findings as, as you've stated. Um, and that would provide the basis for recommendation to the council consistent with your prior recommendation.
Okay.
Uh, thank you, Tom. I'm sure we'll come back to you in just a little bit. And I know that, uh, people have hung on for some time and wanted to make some comments. I'll just, uh, please ask again that, uh, you keep your, uh, comments to about three minutes. And don't be redundant, uh, if someone has already made that, uh, particular point. You can certainly agree and reinforce it. So, uh, uh, I take it someone would like to speak? Yes, who's, someone's waving at me. If you just state your name and your address.
Thank you, Chairman Zaleski. I'm Diane Chan Yip Penn and I live on 18315 Lakeshore Boulevard. And I'm a member of the Parks and Recreation Committee. And, um, I would just like to, um, express a dissenting opinion from what Mr. Monahan emphasized in, in the city council meeting. Chris, we thought Chris was going to be here tonight, but apparently unable. He also, um, uh, expressed that when I went out and looked in, some of us the same thing at the property, it, it seems absolutely available to use in this, in its current, um, uh, park and green belt designation. It can be used for, uh, we talked about garden areas, trails, dog, dog, a dog walking area, picnic tables, a ropes course. It's, it's absolute, there's very little grade in it really, from the top to the bottom. It's, it's long. And, uh, given what we do, uh, the, the amount of construction we do on much more significant grades, this area is, in our opinion, absolutely, I don't mean to speak for the rest of the committee, but, uh, it's my understanding, we all agree that, um, it is absolutely, um, beneficial to the neighborhood and the neighbors getting together. We saw at least four people in 10 minutes out walking their dogs. And, um, they, they seemed to agree that they would much rather have it as a, a park and, a park area and greenbelt area. And, um, I just hope you reconsider any potential conclusions that this is not suitable for park because it truly is absolutely suitable for parks. Options and, um, Chris had several options as well.
Uh, thank you for your comment. I see another person with a hand raised.
Are you talking, my name's Darcy.
If you give your name and your address, please.
Thank you. Darcy DeVoe, 20223 Travis Drive, Lago Vista. Um, I actually live right on Dawn Drive and this piece of property is right down the street from me. And we don't have much green space left up on this side of town anymore. And this little 2.2.1 acres would be a perfect place. And I'm also on the Parks and Rec and we were not, no one came to our committee and asked us about this little piece of park or this piece of green space, nothing. We didn't even know it was there. We've been talking all year about trying to find new tracks and new trails and, and looking at all the city land. And this wasn't even up on our radar. It wasn't even offered as a P2 or anything to us. And so we're just wondering how this gets rezoned to be sold for a hundred thousand dollars when last year it was for $20,000. And now if it gets rezoned, it becomes a hundred thousand dollar property. So, and we're just, we're just all kind of perplexed that, that this would just get passed through without coming to other committees that are just as important as this committee and that it would been offered back to us from the city. And I, um, I believe that's about it. But I also think that, you know, Dawn up here with the, with how they want to put the downtown area and all that stuff, there's not going to be anything green anymore. I mean, it's, it's just building, 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 building. I mean, I, I could, I could count the cars that go on Dawn now racing by. And with the new elementary school being larger, it's like the traffic here is going to be horrible. With this, let's say they put in 12 new houses there and four new people or more than that. And then with the new school being built, it's like, this is just going to be a congested mess. And that's all I'd like to say. Thank you.
Thank you. And anyone else that was certainly wanted to give time for comments, if anybody else wanted to?
Hi, Mr. Chairman. This is Paul Roberts. My camera's off. I'd like to speak.
Go ahead, Paul.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As with Darcy and Diane, I too do not feel that this should be rezoned. This is a green space that can be utilized. We don't need to put soccer fields into that space. We don't need to do any extensive renovations on it. Just as you go down into Austin and you get south, the name of the, the area escapes me. I think it's Bull Creek, maybe? Some of the areas down there, south on 360, south of downtown, it's just trails. And having anchors like this in our city are important for economic development. They're important for keeping people here in Lago Vista. So they're not going to other places. They're not, we've got Balcony's Canyon Land. People go there, they just go hike. They get out, they walk their dogs. This is that kind of venue. It's, doesn't need to be done. I also agree with Darcy that, you know, given the former designation, you know, they should have gone through Parks and Rec and let the, let the advisory committee make a recommendation on it before going. But whatever the case, I think that you'll find a bulk of the citizenry in this town do not want to see it changed. And they would actually like to see it utilized. That was made evidence at the recent council meetings that kicked this back to you. Citizens spoke up, they don't want it. They want it left alone. They don't approve of this consideration this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts. Anyone else before we move on? Tom?
I was just curious why the city council just didn't disapprove it. I mean, I-
I can answer that if you would like, Gary. Since I was there.
I guess I'd rather hear that from, either from Roy or from our city attorney.
Thank you.
The city council found that they did not have the findings that were necessary to make a decision either way. And so they wanted to make sure that all of the proper processes had been followed before they made an ultimate decision on the application. And so the most appropriate step was to send it back to you to make those findings as required by our ordinance.
So they came to us with the application to sell the property. So to us, or as I would see it from that viewpoint, now we can make the findings based on the city had no intention to develop anything there. It's not suitable for traditional parkland or whatever, and whatever. And then when they get that, they can go back and then decide either to go forward or to deny it, right? I mean, it's kind of their decision, it's their property.
Right. But you, you left out the third one, withdraw the application. It's their application.
Right.
Right. And they haven't done that yet, so.
Yeah. Withdrawal of the application was an option that was presented to them. Their choice at that evening was to have the application sent back to you for the analysis and findings, should you be able to make them. I can tell you that on the future land use map, that's part of the comprehensive plan, that property is marked as a POA park, which is not the proper classification because it's not owned by the POA. It is city-owned property. There has never been a plan for development of this property as an official city park. And the, there is also not, at this point, a, an established process or protocol that would require vetting through the Parks and Rec Advisory Committee. When city-owned property is, such as this, that is zoned as a park, would be considered. This is a bit of a unicorn-type property. We, the city doesn't have a ton of property that's zoned as park, but that's not actually dedicated parkland. If it was dedicated parkland, then the analysis would be different that it would require going through, going to the voters to have it changed. This is not dedicated parkland. There has been no plan, neither in the city's master plan or otherwise, that would indicate that it is going to be developed as an active park or passive park for that matter. And therefore, the city did not find it likely that a part, the parcel would be developed in that manner. However, these three findings are things that you would have to find independently to make a recommendation to the council that it be rezoned. Should you be unable to make the, those three findings, then you know, your recommendation would be to not rezone it. And then the council would have to make the, you know, determine whether or not they wanted to overturn your recommendation by a three-fourth vote. So you have options this evening. You, you do need to just indicate and document in your motion whether or not you're finding those three items, whether you can find those three things affirmatively. And if you do, then you could recommend approval. If not, then you would need to recommend denial of the application, the request.
We have a third option in deferring for further city consideration as to whether or not they would wish to withdraw their application entirely?
The, the, you know, if the application moves forward to the city council with a recommendation of denial, the, the city could, the city staff could recommend that the council simply, that, that the application be withdrawn. That's not the requested analysis that be, that is before you today. But it could be the ultimate decision. I think they wanted, the, the request from the council was that you go through this particular process first, and then they will determine what the appropriate step needs to be next.
Because, I mean, based on their intent not to do anything with it, I think, you know, we just have to go through why, oh, this is complying with 1320. And then it's going to have to go back to them to decide whether they want to proceed or not. I mean, I thought that's probably our only option, I would think.
Yeah, I have a question for you. As it comes, when, when the city determines something is excess property or what have you, is there a design process that they go through to market it for sale? I see that in the notes, it says that the POA was given the, the opportunity, or they were made aware that it was available for acquisition and they didn't offer, inquire. I understand that Darcy and Diane are not part of that. They are part of the commission by the city. So just curious as to that process to understand how it was offered. And then, you know, maybe part of our recommendation back is if they're considering changing something from park to another one is, is putting in a step that they need to talk to their commission that they've created for Parks and Rec?
Dawn, did you want to respond?
Yeah. First, first of all, the, the city put roughly, I, I don't remember the exact number, 15 or 20 properties for sale back in, I believe it was September. And this was one of those properties. And all of the other properties moved just like crazy, as they do now. This property did not move. And then finally, somebody came up with an offer, as I understand it. And that's what they're trying to do. And if, if I'm not mistaken, this particular property was zoned P2. And it's, and that's not something that happened yesterday. It's been sitting there for quite some time under that designation of, is that not correct?
That is correct, Mr. Tondro. The property was zoned that way, has been zoned that way for many, many years. And it was placed on the MLS for sale for the required 30 days through the broker that the city uses. And the offer was brought for, multiple, other offers were brought forward. Their initial, the, the offer that was accepted was initially contingent on the rezoning. We cannot, the city cannot agree to rezone a property as a contingency for a sale of a property. However, the city did agree to request the rezoning of the property. If it is rezoned, then the, the property, the prospective purchaser will complete the process. If not, they have an out clause. And then the city would have to determine whether or not they would continue to hold on to it if they want to reevaluate whether or not the viability of the property as a park or sell it to another prospective purchaser.
Excellent. Thank you. Totally answers my questions. Thank you.
Okay. I think, I think the point I was trying to make is that it's been sitting there as, as P2, not developed for many years. And it would seem that a committee that was dedicated on finding, dedicated to finding parkland, seems like they would look through the inventory and see what was already designated as P2 and not let it be a surprise to them when it comes up. You know, I, I'm in favor of parkland and all of that sort of thing. But I mean, you know, let's, let's face the facts. Somebody didn't do their job. And once it came up for sale, you know, the, the city wanted to get rid of it. This is the alternative. And, you know, we went through all of the steps. And I'm telling you, I live close to that piece of property. And it's, it would be very difficult to develop it as a park. I mean, you know, I, I would love to have it as a park, but it would be very difficult. And I think the city is in the situation of, of needing to move it. And we had voted to allow that to go forward in the past. And I think Tom's, what Tom has brought up is, is very correct. That, you know, we have satisfied what we think we should decide about this. And then it's up to the city council to either deny it, you know, they have the final vote. So, you know, those are my two cents.
Thank you, Dawn. And I, I, I mean, it's, it's so obvious that, like Dawn said, somebody didn't do their job. And I mean, listed as a Lago Vista Property Owners Association park. I, I mean, that's, I mean, that tells me right there that there was a grievous error. Richard, I see you're waving.
Yes, thank you. About 10 or 12 years ago, when Frank Robbins was acting city manager and I was chairman or president or whatever it was of Keep Lago Vista Beautiful, he promised that parcel of property to us, K O V B, or Community Gardens. And we asked for some help with some fencing where there's steep drop-off and to bring water to the, to the property. Well, water was always, always the hang-up. We always figured we could figure out something about a fence. But water was always the property and we never could get the city to extend any of the water lines. And so that promise kind of fell by the wayside. But I spent a lot of time walking around on that property, trying to figure out how it could be utilized as a community garden. And it seemed to me that it could work. And it would, it seems to me today that it would be a better use of that property than for duplexes. When this came to us a month ago, I thought that it was a done deal, that it was essentially sold and that reconsideration of the, of the zoning was not actually before us. I, I felt as though the city had made a commitment to sell it and that it was just a bookkeeping matter to provide the buyer with the zoning appropriate for his plans. But for myself, I, I would say this slice of property is much better used as parkland, if that is still a viable option for the city. If they're not too far committed to this buyer, bidder, whatever his status is. And I, I, it, I am only reminded of the number of times that the city has gone to the POA, asking the POA to, "Oh, please give us some of your parkland because we don't have any. We are so parkland poor, we look bad when we put together a a bit of puffery for the Chamber of Commerce about what a lovely city this is, that we can't even mention that we have parks." That because all of the parks are essentially private because they're owned by the POA. And for the city to just say, "Well, we'd rather have duplexes than parkland," I do not agree with that conclusion. I, I would much rather have parkland. And it doesn't have to fit my dream of being community gardens. I, I realize that there are some hazards on that property where there are a few places where there's a steep drop-off and there is a very large overall drop of 50 feet or so from one end to the other. But I think it's all doable. And I, I think it has not been looked at carefully enough before it was offered to this guy. And I, I would be happy if the commission would have as one of its options that this whole thing be sent back to the Parks and Rec people to see if they can come up with a a suitable recommendation to the city that would compel the city or at least persuade the city that that's a good option. And that we would do, be a better city with more parks than more duplexes. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard. Any further comments at this point? Tom, if there's no further discussion on the part of the commission, then would you, would you like to put forward the recommendation?
Okay, I gotta pull up the agenda here. What's the item number? Is there an item number?
Yeah, the, it's item number seven.
Okay. I'll see if I can-
No.
The eight.
I'm, I'm sorry. It's, it's item number eight, Tom.
Okay. Well, again, I I'm viewing this from the perspective of the city requesting a zoning change. And we're looking at, I guess-
And we're looking at, uh, um, I guess validating, it's a valid request. And then they can decide, reconsider at their meeting. But, uh, so I, uh, I make an amendment there for agenda item eight. I recommend, uh, um, planning and zoning, uh, uh, approve the zoning request by the city on the basis of, uh, section 1320D of the chapter 14, the zoning ordinance. And that, uh, uh, the, uh, was never intended for the city. And the D1, uh, says the commission finds significant anticipated changes have occurred in the area since the classification on the land use map was adopted. We pass that because, um, the city never had any intention of doing anything with it. It was more hopeful that the POA would. Two, uh, the city has no intention of developing, developing it for any use under its current, current zoning classification indicated in the master plan. And that three, uh, the requested zoning classification, uh, is most appropriate based on the fact that, uh, there has never, has never been any real plan. And the topography is such that it makes, complicates any type of development. Is that two words?
That's, that's longer than the, what Roy wrote. If you don't mind, Richard. Can we move forward, Richard? So therefore, the recommendation is still that for the change to a R4 multifamily residential? Is that correct?
That's correct.
Have you recorded enough, Aaron, for this to be seconded?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
I'll second the motion. Don, your vote?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, you did not ask for further discussion, and I would like to have further discussion.
Why am I not surprised?
Well, there you go.
It's moved and seconded, and we'll have further discussion. Yes, Richard?
Thank you. Tom cited section 13.20D as part of the rationale, uh, that the, the conditions had been met. Well, only half of the two conditions had been met. There had been no, uh, additional, uh, determination that no, uh, higher bidder, uh, use as parkland has been made. That, that would be the bailiwick of the Parks and Rec Committee. And, and, uh, so I, I think it's a faulty recommend, excuse me, uh, uh, motion that Tom made to cite 13.20D when the conditions of that are not met.
Thank you very much for your comment, Richard.
You're welcome.
Is there any further discussion? If there's no further discussion, it's been moved and seconded. And, uh, uh, Don, your vote was?
Aye.
Larry?
Aye.
And Julie?
Aye.
And the commissioner votes aye. And Richard?
No.
Okay. It's, uh, five to one. And, uh, we'll send it back to the city council and see what they'd like to do with this.
Let, let, let me see if I can wake up Charles.
Wouldn't do it.
He may want to vote with me.
All right. We're, I, I hope that we are able to be obliged for comments from our city council liaison, David Williams. So good to see you, David.
I'm still here. I don't have any comments. I'm good to go.
All right. No comments. Uh, moving on to our consent agenda, that all matters listed in consent agenda are be considered routine by the commission and will be enacted by one motion without discussion. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. We are going to consider the minutes of April 8th, 2021, April 22nd, 2021, of a special call meeting, and May 13th of 2021. So all in, uh, someone make a motion to approve the minutes? I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
Seconded by Tom Monahan. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Approved. Okay, Richard, thank you. And, uh, based on, uh, the way this evening's meeting went, I think we have plenty of future agenda items unless somebody would like to add something else.
Please don't.
Does it? I don't, I don't see anybody jumping in there. So it is 10:54 and we are adjourned. Good night, all.
Aye.
Good night.
Good night.